All right, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the April 1st, 2024 Meeting of the City of Pacifica Planning Commission. This meeting is called to order. May I please have a roll call? Chair Hauser?
Present.
Commissioner Berman?
Present.
Commissioner Devine?
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Present.
Commissioner Godwin has indicated that he will be absent from today. Commissioner Wright?
Present.
And Commissioner Redfield has also indicated that he would be absent tonight. Thank you all. Commissioner Ferguson, can you lead us into the path?
Yeah, of course.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. All right, before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make public comment on any agenda item tonight should complete a speaker card and bring it on to the front and hand it to staff. On the card, please indicate the agenda item number on which you wish to speak or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Members of the public may also participate in the meeting via Zoom. There is also a dial-in option for making public comment. The phone number, which is also on the screen, is (669) 900-6833. Once dialed in, enter conference number (811) 5615-8241, and then press the pound key. Once I have announced the public comment opportunity for the item on which you wish to comment, press star nine to raise your hand if dialing by phone or the raised hand function in Zoom. City staff will then identify you by your name or by the last four digits of your phone number when it is your turn to speak. If dialing in once identified for your turn to speak, press star six to unmute yourself, wait a few seconds, and then begin speaking. Be sure to mute any other broadcasts you may be watching, such as Channel 26 or the live stream. Dial instructions are shown on the screen, and I will call them up when we have other public input opportunities. Public meetings are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission, and comments on agendized items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city or on topic. If the warning is not followed, the chair will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone, and throughout this warning system, I will seek the assistance of the city attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item or not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Which brings us to our agenda. So, we have no administrative items tonight and no designation of liaison to City Council. Is that still the case, Mr. Fontes?
It is, Chair Hauser.
Okay, fabulous. Then with that, we will move on to oral communications. Again, this time is for items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public will be given three minutes to speak. I do not have any comment cards. Does anyone wish to speak during oral communications for items that are not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, do we have anyone on Zoom or on the phone?
Chair, we have two raised hands at this time.
Fabulous.
Sam, you are now unmuted.
Before we start, I have kind of like one general comment and then one that's kind of interrelated to the back of the back of the agenda, so can I go ahead and use like five minutes now since there's only two people speaking anyway, or do you want me to split my comments up?
Is this Mr. Casillas?
Yes.
Hi, hi. I believe that you have to split them up if the second thing you wish to talk about is an item that is on the agenda, because oral communications is only for items not on the agenda, and I am seeing a nod from the city attorney. So, so sorry about that, Mr. Casillas.
Okay. Let me know when my time starts.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Dear Plan Commissioners, it was clear at the last meeting that the majority of the public doesn't want to turn Pacifica into a toxic dirt dump site. Think about it. If you want to get rid of something and I have to take it somewhere where they charge me to leave it, it's called a dump, regardless of the bow you want to wrap around it. This planning commission could have shown a little political courage and voted the reclamation plan down on the grounds of turning this into a public nuisance. You had plenty of data from CQ experts, engineers, and scientists telling you that it's a disastrous plan that you could have voted to deny based on this solid evidence, but instead you chose to take the easy way out, postpone the vote, and chose to re-traumatize your own citizens who were overwhelmingly against it and sent some into a mental crisis. For the six incumbent commissioners, think about it. If everything climate scientists are saying, the real ones, I mean, are telling you how bad the climate crisis is and is already here and happening now, do you really believe we should be literally turning a big hole that is only a few feet from the ocean into a dump site for soil of questionable quality? Why don't you just cut out the middle step and take those trucks and dump the toxins directly into the ocean, avoiding school hours, of course? Or are these just fear tactics as the new appointee believes? Do you really believe that a thin slice of crumbling rock is not going to give out with the threat of constant erosion, or that the soil won't liquefy into the creek after those falcons run laughing to the bank after playing us rubs? And let's not pretend that this is about economic development either, since all of you are sitting on your laurels while the Seabowl, our only tax-generating family entertainment business, is up for demolition by yet another bigger million-dollar home developer who will further push this city into bankruptcy. Don't take my word for it. Look at the city's own $100,000 development economic development study plan for that. I would have loved to have been in the room with the quarry owner. Excuse me?
You have one minute left.
I would love to have been in the room with the quarry owner that based soils discussed this scheme. Felon, boss, I got a deal for you you're not going to believe. I'm going to get a dump, get a dump for contaminated soil open on a beautiful coastal town, and we're going to make 50 to 100 million. Get this, we're going to say we're reclaiming it for environmental purposes. We don't even have to build those realtor mobsters, those houses on the flood zone. We'll declare bankruptcy and be gone when the bank, when the dump melts into into the flood zone and into the ocean. Quarry owner, I can't believe anybody is that stupid, but if you get it done, we're going to be reached, leaving those hippies with a super fund cleanup site. But that's what FEMA is for, right, Commissioner Berman? Lastly, let's just remember, Pacifica is not a dump. I'll be back later.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
William Leon, you are now unmuted.
Thank you and good evening, Chair and planning commissioners. William Leo Leon, Olympian Way. I'm speaking on the coastal development permit on item one.
Oh, Mr. Leon, this is oral communications, and so item one will be next.
Oh, okay. Thank you, and I'll wait my turn.
Thank you very much. I'll make sure we call on you on item one. And I just got some yellow speaker cards that I believe are all... I have one, Cliff Lawrence.
Good evening. Really good to see you all here. My name's Cliff Lawrence. I'm in Pacifica. I wanted to give you an additional note on my reflections on the quarry. It was after the last time we discussed it that somebody had said something about the LLC that had been created for Baylands and this, and it got me thinking. Because this is LLC, it's focused specifically only on the quarry. Consider this scenario, that the front end of the project, money's coming in, the back end of the project, which is the parts we want, the money's not coming in and it's starting to cost them something. Because it's an LLC, they can walk away with from this, and we'll be stuck with something really bad. My other note for you tonight is I started rereading the thesis on Muscle Rock. This ought to be considered in any study of the coastline here. It's not really about Muscle Rock, which is just a few feet beyond our city line. This is a study, parts of it talk about impacts from that area all the way down to Sharp Park. There is a lot of data and references to former studies of what has been going on in tonics and surface flows in this area and how they work in combination for and against each other. A real study of the coastline of this area cannot really be conducted without a clear and deep reading of, it's 141 pages, but it's impactful. And don't be misled by the fact that it talks about Muscle Rock. It's it's our neighborhood. It's District One and probably part of District Two. And I think you'll find it's important and informative. Not all of it's fun to read, but I think it will be critical in our going forward to know what's happened in the past here. I thank you.
Thank you. All right, those are the only speaker cards I have for oral communications. So with that, I'll close oral communications. We have no consent items tonight, so I am moving on to CDP-429-21, TP-5-24, which is Coastal Development Permit and Tree Permit Construction of Courtyard Addition, sorry, for construction of a courtyard addition with retaining walls and installation of new landscaping to an existing single-family residence at 204 Olympian Way. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. And good evening, commissioners. My name is Jay Garcia. I'm a contract planner for the City of Pacifica. The project before you this evening is a request for a coastal development permit and heritage tree authorization for the construction of a courtyard addition with retaining walls and installation of new landscaping to an existing single-family residence in the Pedro Point Shelter Cove neighborhood. Next slide, please. Thank you. This project requires planning commission review because the project is located in the appeal jurisdiction on the coastal zone. In this area, grading, removing, dredging, mining, or extraction of any material is considered development and therefore triggers the requirement for review and approval of a coastal development permit. Second, a tree permit is required in accordance of a Pacifica tree preservation ordinance because the project proposes encroachment of construction activity within 50 feet of a protected tree. You can move on to the next slide, please. On your screen, I'll take you through the project details, starting first with the site plan. Here's the existing site plan on your left and the proposed on your right. The project site is 13,574 square feet. The lot is sloped steeply uphill from the road. It has an average grade of 41.38%. The lot consists of an existing single-family residence with a street-level garage, a rooftop deck above the garage, stairs that start at the street level and are constructed upslope along the east side of the property. The planning director approved an administrative coastal development permit for the creation of an attached accessory dwelling unit in October of 2023, and that project is currently under building permit review. This proposed site plan includes multiple landscape improvements, including new retaining rolls at the front of the residence, a new paved rear patio, an extension of the paved stairs and pathway on the east side of the residence. Gravel stairs are proposed on the west side of the residence. Wooden steps are proposed from the rear patio up to the back property line on the west side of the property. Landscape planting is proposed throughout the full site, and a naturalistic seating area is proposed about midway between the back of the residence and the rear property line. Next slide, please. Focusing first on the front retaining yard retaining, whoa, focusing first on the front yard retaining walls, the applicant proposes a lower two-foot timber wall and an upslope three-foot concrete wall. The proposed retaining walls would allow for a small trash enclosure and public utility easement enclosure with a gate adjacent to the existing garage. Next slide, please. Now moving on to the proposed plans for the rest of the site, the proposed project includes a 1,545-square-foot rear patio courtyard. And on this slide, I have a couple of animations that that show the courtyard labeled here in green, and the stairs throughout the site, including a 621-square-foot extension, concrete paved stairs on the east side of the residence to connect to the rear patio, gravel and timber stairs on the west side of the residence, and timber stairs leading upslope to the rear of the property and the left side of the property labeled in blue. And finally, the project also proposes that naturalistic seating area to be mulched and surrounded by boulders, and that's labeled there in orange. Next slide, thank you. This is the proposed lands, or I'm sorry, this slide shows the proposed retaining walls, elevations. The retaining walls are proposed on three sides of the rear patio and range in height from four feet up to 16 feet. There is a three-and-a-half-foot steel guard rail located on top of the retaining wall. Next slide, please. This is a proposed landscape plan, which includes grasses, shrubs, and trees all throughout the site. The Pacifica municipal code requires a minimum of 20% of the property to be landscaped. This project proposes proposes a total of 44%. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes the tree protection plan. There are a total of 23 trees identified within 50 feet of the proposed scope of work. This includes 16 non-protected trees, seven protected trees, all of which are considered heritage trees. All trees are proposed to remain. The tree protection plan has been prepared for the project and has been reviewed by the city's consultant arborist, who has confirmed to meet that it meets the city's requirements. This project requires the authorization of a tree encroachment permit for the seven heritage trees, tree 70 through 76, which are identified in blue on your screen. Next slide, please. The grading plan is summarized on this page, and the project proposes 590 cubic yards of cut and 140 cubic yards of fill. As a result, 450 cubic yards of soils planned to be exported. This is the equivalent of approximately 40 to 45 chuckloads. Next slide, please. That leads us into this slide here, the traffic control plan. The applicant will be required to prepare a traffic control plan to manage construction and soil off-haul resulting from the project due to the narrow street along Olympian. On your screen is the initial traffic control plan prepared by the applicant. A final traffic control plan will be reviewed and approved by the city at the time of building permit and will include the traffic control plan-related conditions of approval within the packet. This includes conditions 15, 17, 18, and 23. This initial plan includes a construction route plan, which includes traffic control for off-haul at the intersection of Olympic and Grand Avenue. The plan also notes vehicle loading area in gray, truck loading by the way of conveyance identified in purple, and no parking signs noted by the red squares. This is a preliminary plan, and again, a final plan will be reviewed at the time of building permit. Next slide, please. Two public comments were received after publication of the staff report in advance of today's meeting. These were shared with the planning commission and published on the city's website. Next slide, please. And the proposed project to construct a courtyard addition and install landscaping to an existing single-family residence would comply with the applicable local coastal program and zoning provisions. Conditions of approval would reduce identified negative neighborhood impacts and could that could result from the project, such as the requirement for a traffic control plan to manage potential impacts to access along Olympian Way. A tree protection plan would also ensure protected trees are not adversely impacted during construction of the project, and staff's detailed analysis of the project is contained in the staff report. And for these reasons, staff recommends the planning commission approval of the project as conditioned. This is the end of my presentation. Thank you very much. City staff and members of the applicant team are available to answer any questions that the planning commission may have. I've also included at the end of this PowerPoint some photos of the Olympian Way for your reference.
Thank you. The photos are appreciated. Does the applicant have a presentation, or are they just here to answer questions?
The applicant team is here. Would you like to introduce yourself?
My name's Aaron Van Rue. I represent the builder, Mission City Construction, and I'm also with the architect, Mayberry Workshop Architecture. I could answer any questions that come up.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will open the public hearing. I do not have speaker cards in the room on item one, but I know that we have Mr. Leon on the phone, and there may be more raised hands. Can we put the dial-in and the Zoom instructions? Okay, fabulous. So reminder, if you're dialed in by phone, to press star nine to raise your hand. Giving the room one more chance for speaker card. Okay, we'll go to Zoom and the phone.
William Leo Leon, you are now unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So I'm speaking on item one, and you know, living on Olympian Way, we are anxious and hopeful that the applicant owners will complete this project successfully and move in. That being said, the project as it stands has been going on for whatever reasons for over three years. And to be frank with everyone, aside from the job site, the official job site at 204 Olympian Way, the owners own the adjacent lot and the lot across the street, which have also had, let's say passive, not so much passive, but they've also contributed to the the condition of the roadway in front of, adjacent to, and all probably along Olympian Way, because we've had so much heavy equipment. And that leads me to condition 17, where the existing curb sidewalks and street improvements adjacent to and in front of the property that are damaged or displaced should be repaired or replaced as deemed by the city engineer. And I sent a message to city engineer this morning. And so looking at condition 17, I think for pedestrian safety, road safety, and just overall protection of the street to keep it from deteriorating from all the heavy ongoing equipments. So I'm not criticizing the work, you know, it's necessary work to be done. What I'm pointing out here is that we need to have a condition to bring the street up to an acceptable level that's safe for vehicular and pedestrian traffic and
One minute.
Establish a, you know, a condition that is not a nuisance, you know, it's not a hazard. And I think we're rapidly getting there. For instance, there's a very large crater in front of the adjacent lot, which the owners of 204 also own. And during these last rains, you know, it's starting to look, you don't know where the bottom of that water is, and have to drive around it. So, and the same goes for anybody walking along there. So I just asked the commission to please visit conditions that ensure the public safety and the vehicular safety of the roadway from the conditions that have been created actually by the project over all this time. And like I said, we're really hopeful that the project can be brought to like successful conclusion as soon as possible. This is just an ongoing project, you know, it's one of the longest projects I've ever ever seen, but that
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Your three minutes are up, but I think we understood the gist of your comment, and I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other raised hands?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Give just a couple more seconds. Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to use their three minutes to respond to the comment, or you don't you don't have to either?
Sure, I'll respond to William's concern. So we're aware that the condition of Olympian is not fantastic sort of across the entire roadway. Hasn't been since we started the project. It is within our scope that we're doing some concrete apron improvements in front of 204, and part of that work involves restoring the asphalt along it. So we intended to work with the city on whatever we're allowed to do up there. I'm not clear as to who has the right to do the roadway work, but we are a Class A general engineering contractor. We can definitely do that work. But typically, that's done by the jurisdiction and the public utility. So I'd love to hear feedback on who's responsible for that work on Olympian.
Thank you very much. So I think now with that, I will close the public hearing, I think was what I was supposed to do. Yeah, sorry. Okay, we're going to get it right and bring it back to the commission for any questions for staff or the applicant or deliberation. Commissioner Devine?
Yeah, I have a, so you had mentioned that this is just a preliminary plan. This is not a submission for a building permit?
The construct, the traffic control plan is preliminary. The rest of the plans are what you'll be reviewing and approving tonight.
And you had said 45 chuckloads of dirt?
Approximately 40 to 45.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions for the applicant, actually. I guess kind of touching off of the public comment, and this was actually one of the questions that I wrote down before hearing the public comment. Was there a Was there a pre-construction road survey completed before work began to kind of mark the condition of the road before any construction began?
So here to date, no major large trucks have been involved with the project's scope, just general trucking. So this will be the first time that large trucks would be involved. So it, I mean, that could be done. I think you'll find that the road is not in great shape as it stands today.
As the applicant, do you know if the owner would be willing to expand the asphalt repaving beyond just the driveway replacement, so perhaps the full width of the road along the property frontage?
I think the applicant would be willing to consider that, yes.
Another question I had was on the grading plan. So I appreciate all of the detailed grading and the top-of-wall elevations. I think it was probably just a typo, but the detail in the grading plan, and I'm looking at packet page thirty-three, where there's a typical cross-section of the retaining wall and identifying what all the abbreviations mean. The top-of-wall points to what I would imagine is the top-of-wall, but I believe some of the grades, especially for the sixteen-foot wall, the TW grade is actually top-of-handrail. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, yes, that appears correct.
Okay, so the wall at the back of the patio is the concrete, if it's gonna be concrete, the concrete structure itself is a sixteen-foot wall from finished grade to top-of-wall, bottom-of-handrail?
Measured from the bottom of the wall, yes, but it stops at grade at the top-of-wall. And it's a soldier pile and lagging wall, which we have in other locations along Olympian to act as a retaining wall. These are ideal because they allow drainage through the wall system, which is intended. So it's a better retaining wall when you have groundwater that's gonna pass through the system.
Drainage through the wall, so like seeping through the face of the wall?
Right.
Okay, is there going to be, because I believe there was a detail for sub-drainage at the retained side of the wall, which is typical. Is there going to be drainage capture on the patio side of the wall then?
There is, and that's detailed on C two zero. So the drainage is collected on the front of the wall and top side of the back of the wall. This particular type of retaining wall system allows us to set lagging and piles as you dig. So it's a top-down wall. So it's a much less invasive process, and there's fewer materials that have to be imported and concrete that'll have to be pumped, so.
Okay.
It was selected for its efficiency and drainage characteristics.
Okay, thank you. And then you mentioned the piles. I saw in the geotechnical report that the recommendation was for the footing to reach bedrock. So that's the intent, to have the wall piled into the bedrock?
Yes, and we have experience on Olympian with that. We did have to drill elliptical piers for the main house improvements and retaining wall restorations and for the ADU embedments. So we have a decent idea of where that exists.
Okay. Is there a hall route plan? I don't know if I saw one, just for the forty-something trucks expected.
So there isn't one that extends down through the town, but obviously, it's we're gonna go direct to Highway one to trucking. The flagging plan, which I worked on with my team, intends to have a flagger at the end of Olympian and at the site and time the trucks down, so we'll have a clear access and sort of take the trucks down with a pilot truck. So that's the intention, to minimize impact.
Moving that question to city staff, a part of the building permit approval process, will you be reviewing a hall route, reviewing and commenting or approving a hall route plan? Because I know the roads are small and they're tight there.
Yes, that, one of the conditions of approval include that as the requirements of the traffic control plan, so that will be identified, including a turnaround point on Olympian Way as well.
Those are all my questions for the applicant. Thank you. A few, or one question for city staff. So I know, especially in this neighborhood, we have typical language related to public sidewalk curb and gutter improvements. And I think it was probably years ago now, but we used it pretty consistently, that we effectively deferred projects' requirement to improve the public sidewalk curb and gutter because there's no sidewalk curb and gutter right now to connect to. But it's still the responsibility of the applicant, and that improvement is deferred. I'm wondering if that language could be applied to this project, because right now, the way I read the conditions is that this property, this project would never be required to provide that pedestrian access, when I think in the past, we have required it of projects, but it's been a deferment.
Perhaps the city staff can help me answer that one as it refers to other projects as well?
Yes, Commissioner Berman, I'm not familiar with other approval project approvals on this area that have had that standard condition of approval. We could add it if you know the language, if you recall that. We also have city engineer Roland Yip here. He might know where, what that language is as well.
Yeah, if he could look that up, we could probably continue, and I could try to look it up on my end, too. We could circle back to that then.
Commissioner Ferguson, did you have questions?
Yeah, I think we overlapped almost all of our questions here. First question for staff, has there been encroachment permit applied for the project?
Not for this project here. They would be required to submit for encroachment permit for any work in the public right-of-way, but nothing has been submitted.
I think that also counts for staging of equipment in the public right-of-way, right? Because the way I see it, understand it, they're gonna be flagging on Olympian, so they'll be staging dump trucks on, before it can, they can turn right onto Olympian. I think that would require an encroachment permit?
Any construction activities, my understanding would be managed by the encroachment permit, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I see there's a lot of conditions of approval here, which I would have liked to see, like we've come up several times before on Olympian, how you turn around a end dump on Olympian. I mean, if you're talking about forty truckloads for four hundred and fifty yards, that's a full-size end dump, dump truck, and where you make that one hundred and eighty-degree turn on Olympian, I'd love to see in action, or if they're reversing down the street. But I would like to see that as part of this in the future. Okay, I guess that answers my staging on Olympian question. Did it come up at all provisions for fueling? This size of a cut and fill is gonna require large, heavy equipment. Is there any, like, city requirements or building management practices for specific, I'm not familiar, that require containment for fueling heavy equipment on project sites?
For fueling the equipment?
Correct.
That may be covered by the regional permit of the stormwater management plan that would be associated with it, but maybe city staff can speak to any fueling of equipment on-site?
It's my understanding that if fueling on-site is not allowed, and it's regulated regionally.
Sorry, fueling of equipment on-site is not allowed?
Are you speaking to large, like, truck or?
Like excavators.
Excavators. I'm not familiar with that.
I will say that for, like, stormwater permits, there is requirements for to, for stormwater management and pollution prevention. If they were to propose that, it would be mitigated through the regional permit of the San Mateo County. However, maybe the applicant can speak to whether they plan to fuel equipment on-site.
Sure, okay. No, they covered all my other questions, I think, already.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
I just have a couple of quick questions, because a lot of them have already been answered and addressed. Can I get assurance both from the city and from the applicant that we will have a hundred percent access for fire and ambulance service going through that street at all times in the event of an emergency?
Yes, it would be required to keep the road open through the entirety of the construction.
And additionally, is one hundred percent of the drainage for all the roof loads and the new deck, is one hundred percent of that going into a stormwater system?
The civil engineer for the project has identified that all the drainage would be mitigated on-site.
I thought I saw the word "may" or "where possible" in there. I may be a little bit confused. I was just looking for a little clarification. And then on page five of the staff report, there was a statement about, in terms of large lifts, where possible, minimize them and split them in half or do them in smaller lifts. I understand by looking at the project what the intent is. Was there any consideration given to making it two levels instead of one big cut, or was there any back-and-forth on that, or was that, this is what we want to do, period? Because it seems to be a little conflict between what they're applying for and what you're saying, and then what you're recommending.
Yes, so there were earlier iterations of the project that had multiple tiers of retaining walls that extended all the way to the rear of the property. However, it was kind of a back-and-forth dialogue between the city and the applicant to identify something that was more consistent with the local coastal program, and that included trying to move the development closer to the rear of the residence to reduce the potential impacts of visibility to the ridge line that was above the project. And so this final design came forward as the design with the least amount of impacts to the hillside, the visibility of the hillside.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. So I had some questions slash comments, and they all really relate to tree protection and to what Mr., what the caller had said about the roadway. So I think for my read of this, there are no trees being proposed for removal, but they are all pretty close to construction. And so I appreciate that there was both an arborist report and a review. I want to understand if the city requires a tree bond for the value of the trees that was put into the arborist report. I did not see anything in the conditions, but we have required the tree bonds in the past, so I wanted to get some insight.
Chair Hauser, I'm not familiar with that. If you could give me a second just to look up the code?
Sure.
be required prior to issuance of a tree encroachment permit. It appears that that condition was mistakenly left off the resolution. So when we make the motion, we'll add that condition of approval.
Sure. And so to clarify for the record, the estimate, which is on packet page seventy, is fifty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars, and the tree bond should reflect the arborist's value. Sticking with trees, there seemed to be a little bit of a conflict between what the applicant's arborist recommended and what our consulting arborist thought they were recommending, and I would like to go with what our consulting arborist thought they were recommending. So let me clarify that. The DUDAC review letter said that an arborist, a monitoring arborist, should be on-site during excavation. And I think that that is the appropriate, the appropriate condition to put in here. So I think we need to clarify condition of approval three, which just refers back to the arborist report, and says that there needs to be monitoring arborist when excavation is happening within the tree protection zone. There should be no excavation in a tree protection zone. That's why it's a tree protection zone. So because I believe there was an error in the applicant's arborist report, we should go with the DUDAC recommendation on page eighty-five of the packet, and we should clarify in condition of approval three that no work shall occur in the tree protection zone. I would also like to clarify, this is more of a question for staff, but on packet page seventy-five, it says that the tree protection zone is one point five to two times the diameter, but the diameter of what? It doesn't make clear if it's the diameter of the trunk at DBH or the diameter of the canopy. So I believe it's the diameter of the canopy based on the chart, but I want to make sure that I'm understanding that, because some of those trees are four inches, and a six-inch tree protection zone seems silly.
Yes, my understanding it's the diameter of the canopy.
Okay.
But there can be deviations from that.
So that's probably it. Now, in regards to condition of approval seventeen, I wanted to pick up where Commissioner Berman and Commissioner Ferguson had kind of gone on the frontage, replacing the full asphalt of the frontage, and I'm glad that we're going to do that. It would seem to me that when this project, the actual home project, was originally approved, that there would have been some sort of condition of approval at that time that pertained to making this street drivable for all vehicles. Do we know if that was, I mean, I know that we're reaching back a few years at this point, but do we know if that was a condition on that project?
So I believe that there was a two thousand twenty-one addition remodel that, or maybe not a rendition, but a remodel, interior remodel for the project. And I do not know if that was conditioned at that time. We would have to go back to any conditions of approval if it was a project that had standard conditions. And perhaps the applicant has something to speak directly towards that permit that was approved. And then there's a second project of the ADU, which would not include that as part of the
Would not, okay, that makes sense. Would Mr. Yip be available to answer some questions on the roadway?
Yes.
Yeah?
I believe so. Was, did you want to speak to this?
Coming up.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, our city engineer, but you're
Understood that, sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So I did want to clarify, is Olympian Way part of the city's poeholing, or poeholing, the city's street replacement program to remove potholes? Is this one of the streets that's getting improved?
Good evening, Commissioner Hauser. Roland Yip, Deputy Director of Public Works slash city engineer. So all streets in the city, if it's not on our street resurfacing program that we redo every five years, we will send our field services staff out there and pothole and remove and repair any locations that are needed here.
Is this on the resurfacing plan for the short term?
So we are at the end of our street resurfacing plan. We will be developing the next five years, so it's to be seen what's gonna come out of our Street Saver software that
Right.
The recommendations, so we defer to the recommendations from the software whenever we select the streets. This street is not on the last, this upcoming street resurfacing project. Grand Avenue is, which is at the base of Olympian Way.
Okay, that's really helpful to understand. On that same line of questions, the kind of question came up from Commissioner Berman of whether we could have, or I can't remember who said it, maybe it was the applicant, but are, is the applicant allowed to repair and replace the street fronting the property?
Oh, yes, he's welcome to pull an encroachment permit and replace all the way to edge, you know, from edge of the roadway to edge of the roadway. Yes, he's definitely allowed to. Yes, he's definitely allowed to replace that section.
Okay. And where would, and this is also for the city attorney, what would be the, like, where's the nexus? Like for the limits, because, you know, people are coming up the hill. What's the?
For the asphalt repair, it'd be the frontage.
Just, just the frontage. Okay. Um, okay. Does anyone else have questions for our city engineer?
I, I do actually. Um, well, I guess jumping back to my previous comment regarding the deferment of pedestrian improvements, I did find a project that we reviewed, um, that has the language. It is, hang on, let me find the date. It's from.
Commissioner Berman?
Yep.
So we were able to find that, that condition of approval on a few of the projects that.
Yeah.
Have come forward to the planning commission. Um, our research indicates that that condition of approval was placed on projects that involved construction of new square footage.
Isn't that this or new building?
New building.
Square.
Square footage, yes. And this project is a landscape project with retaining walls.
I guess, why was that distinction made? So like, if, for example, if a project were to repave their entire backyard to be impervious, I mean, that's, I'd say that's more impactful than adding square footage to a home. Is the idea that the occupant load of the home would raise?
So, um, there would have to be a nexus between the project and increasing pedestrian traffic.
Okay, got it. Well, if it's okay, I'd like to just read the language, just for the record.
Of course.
Um, understanding that right now the city doesn't have a nexus for it. So it's per the adopted City of Pacifica Complete Street Policy, development shall include facilities for pedestrians. Applicant shall record with the County Recorder's Office a deferred improvements agreement, which will run with the land and be binding on any future owners of the property to provide sidewalk facilities at a future date upon, upon demand by the city. So that's the language, language I was thinking of. Um, thank you for looking into that. There's one item, I, I do want to come back to the asphalt replacement at the frontage of the road. Well, I guess I'll do that now, sorry. Um, it's been a long day. I personally think that it should be a condition of approval for the entire width of the roadway within the frontage limits be replaced, the asphalt be replaced and to the satisfaction of the city engineer. So I don't know if that means, um, both the asphalt and the aggregate base need to be replaced or if it's just, you know, grind and overlay of the asphalt, um, because it does look pretty treacherous out there.
So, uh, we, we can take a look at the base conditions when we go out there. So it can just be dependent on our field inspection at that time. And if it's a three inch grind and overlay is acceptable, we can go with that. But if we go out and, uh, we see that, you know, additional base needs to be removed, we can condition it as such as well.
I'd appreciate that. Do you have something to add on that?
I, I just, I also think that it would be, so there may not be a nexus for more street, but I do think it, it's very in keeping with what we've done in the past and with what other cities do to require a photo survey before the, the large trucks. And I think that we should do that. And then to the satisfaction of the city engineer, the street should be restored to a improved condition.
Yeah, and, um, my experience is that photo survey is not limited to the property frontage. It's the entire road or, or, you know, to the satisfaction of the city engineer, some limit of the start and end of the roadway.
Agree.
I really think we have to view this beyond frontage. I mean, that road is already hammered and 45, 40 to 45 truckloads is going to, there could be spot repair and it could be more than necessary to, for the applicant to take responsibility for that.
Yeah, and I feel pretty confident if there's a, um, pre-construction survey done of the road, just a video or photograph survey, I think that's typically a pretty good way to document the condition of the road right now. And then the applicant will be required to remedy any additional deterioration.
Mr. Yip, would you mind commenting on, like, what we're talking about? I'd just love to give you an opportunity to opine.
Yeah, uh, so I think a pre-construction video of the entirety of the Olympian Way is, is a reasonable request. Uh, it's something that we do for our capital improvement program projects, that we would do pre-construction videos, just to document the existing conditions of the site. And if there are any damages, then we can go back to a timestamp video and show the contractor and we can agree to some repairs afterwards as well.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions for the city attorney or the city engineer?
I, I do, do you want me to go?
Go ahead, you finish.
Um, I think this, I'd like to hear from fellow commissioners on this. The retaining wall at the back of the site is 16 feet high. There's also grading beyond that uphill for a new seating area. Looking through some of the findings that we have to make, one of which on packet page eight, about the improvements following the site topography, um, using multi-leveled structures or multi-leveled improvements to reduce the height of retaining walls. In my opinion, I think there's probably an easy way to add a terrace to this improvement and reduce the scale of a 16-foot retaining wall. But I want to talk to the fellow commissioners about that. So I'll pass it off to Commissioner Wright.
Um, I was going back to the street issue and while I 100% agree with you, I do have a concern. My concern is, is that, okay, we fix the street in front of the subject property. Where's all that water now going to go? I'm worried about the neighbors. And all of a sudden, it's all going right onto the neighbors.
I guess, where, where does it go now? So.
We don't have the street surveys, so I can't answer that question.
I think if anything, well, my understanding of what the asphalt improvements would be in the property frontage is that there wouldn't be any change to the grading of the road. It would effectively maintain the same surface, surface drainage. So whichever direction the road does drain, I'm guessing it's away from this property since this property's uphill. I'm imagining the completed roadway improvement would still drain in that direction. Sure, there might be slightly more runoff because I'm sure right now a lot of the stormwater infiltrates the road, which is not what you want. But I personally am not too concerned with drainage changes with the road improvement.
The, the reason that rather than having them actually do the improvements, maybe it's an in lieu of fee so that it's all done at once, so all that drainage on the whole street is considered. And perhaps the city engineer could, due to the condition of the road, give us some assurance that that road will be on the repaving list in the near term.
Sure.
After the construction project. If that makes sense to the city engineer.
So in terms of, um, the, the near term in the Street Saver selection process, it's, it's an algorithm where it's, um, done by benefit costs. And, uh, it determines, you know, how much benefit there is with the street based on the repair costs. So right now, due to the condition of the street, um, the, the, the repair cost is quite significant if we were to repave all of Olympian Way. So there, there are prioritized streets that we have for our major streets where everyone uses, which is why Grand Avenue was selected first, because there are more usage on that street as well. So, uh, in terms of whether or not it will get selected, that will depend on Street Saver and the algorithms that is running. But it's unlikely that it will make it in a five-year master plan, considering we have a, um, a hundred million dollar backlog in street repairs and we only spend around $2 million a year. So there's a long ways to go. So in terms of taking a deferment, um, tracking that because of how far it's projecting out, I think it's best that we ask the applicant to just repair the frontage.
I, I, yeah, so I, I concur with what the city engineer just said. I think it's, you know, we've had questions for years about can we repair this, can we repair that? And I don't think it's our place to, like, jump the algorithm. So I'm, I'm happy with the two types of things that we discussed, which is the nexus being repaired by the applicant and then a photo survey that allows the city engineer to require additional, um, work. To answer Commissioner Berman's question, I am the person that is almost always for terracing. But on this one, based on the current topography and that it's kind of nestled back there and the fact that if you look at the street view and also like the renderings and the elevation of the finished floor versus the final elevation of the terrace patio, I think it's all going to be behind the house. And I don't think anyone is going to see it except the occupant of the building and maybe the neighbor. But if you look at the way their house is situated, I, I think that's not what they would really primarily see. So I'm personally okay with it as designed, but that's my two cents.
Sure.
I started where you were and ended up, in retrospect, thinking about it being behind the building. So I have actually fallen on that side. I do find it interesting though, that we can't have a sidewalk or even a deferment, but we can make room for a garbage enclosure. So that does feel a bit strange to me. And perhaps the applicant might want to consider whether making space for pedestrian access might be something they might be willing to entertain.
Yeah, I, I do like that, the language from the deferment for pedestrian facilities, but I, I think it is important that we remain consistent with what we've done, um, on previous projects. And maybe it's something to note in the future with goal setting or whatever it is, um, to consider making that deferment a requirement beyond just adding square footage to the buildings. So, terracing, um, so the reason why I saved this one for last is because I think the main impact a 16-foot wall is going to have is on the property owner because it's going to be in their backyard. And I mean, just imagining a 16-foot wall, it's double the size of this wall right here. I mean, it's, it's going to be huge. And there's going to be a handrail on top. Um, but I think, well, I guess city attorney, the findings for the scales of walls, uh, wall height and, um, structures following site topography and trying to reduce the height of walls is, our purview is from the visibility of the public realm or, or what is, where is our purview with respect to that finding? If it's, if it's a wall that's never going to be seen by anyone else.
I'll get over to senior planners or funders.
Yes, um, Commissioner Berman, the intent of the finding is to, um, protect public views and additionally, um, to ensure that the public is not looking at large walls at all times, whether that be up on a hill or as a pedestrian or driving on a street. Um, and so typically what, when the city, um, is opposed to these large walls or there are walls along the right of way, there are walls that are not screened, um, walls that are not landscaped. That's really where, um, planning staff, where we try to work with the applicant to reduce the visibility of that wall and either reducing the height of it or adding screening to it in some way. Outside of that, uh, our regulations allow for, for walls of this height. And it would be up to the planning commission to, um, approve of that wall height at that location.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, given that, I am fine with the plans as they show.
So, just gathering a little consensus, I feel like we've got conditions. I don't hear anyone opposed to the project. Does anyone want to make a motion? And if they do, I think we should, um, ask, um, staff to please recount the conditions that we've added.
I'd be ready to make a motion, but I'd want to go over some conditions. So if I, if I were to propose it, I think the, the conditions that I've heard are to include a condition of approval for the tree bond to reflect, um, the city arborist's values. Also a deferred improvements agreement for pedestrian traffic. I'll, I'll have staff help me with some language around that.
We're not doing that.
We're not doing that.
Right.
Because it, it, um, is typically only a requirement when projects are increasing the square footage of the building, which this one isn't.
Okay. I don't know if you're trying to understand why, but.
Yeah. Is that, is that correct with?
It's not quite as clearly, uh, as, as a bright lane rule as that. It's in order to establish nexus for, um, a condition of approval, you'd have to show that the, um, project at hand uh, necessitates that, uh, the improvement that you are seeking. And so there would have to be some discussion or some development or some basis uh, by which pedestrian access would increase as a result of this project or, or of the, of the action that's before you tonight.
I, I just need to remember that condition on other projects in the immediate vicinity of this. That's fine. Uh, so then the second condition would be to replace the asphalt to the satisfaction of the city engineer on the entire frontage of the project property, as well as, uh, conduct a pre-construction survey of the entire roadway that is subject to the, uh, approved haul route for this project. I think we need to say all of Olympian if they're not planning to use all of Olympian. They shouldn't be liable for incidental damage outside of their, uh, truck haul route.
And then I wanted to make sure that my condition of approval, um, regarding an arborist monitoring during excavation near the tree protection zone.
That's a general requirement, isn't it?
It's, it's not. Right now, it says it's condition of approval three. And right now it says it shall follow the recommendations of the arborist report, which has a typo in there. And our city arborist letter correctly states what the requirement should be.
Got it.
So the condition of approval needs to be modified to reflect that we're following our city arborist's recommendation.
All right, thank you for that. Um, all right, so I have one condition, um, that will be modified and then two new conditions. So I'll read the entire condition. Um, so condition number three, applicant shall comply with the tree protection plan prepared by Urban Tree Management, Inc., dated November 29 to 2023 throughout all stages of the project, except that an arborist will be onsite during excavation within the tree protection zone as identified in the tree protection plan.
It's not within the tree protection zone. You can say near the tree protection zone and then the planning staff can. And then the planning staff can determine or the arborists can determine what that means. There should be no excavation in the tree.
Abutting the tree protection zone?
I would say near. Looking at Ms. Sharma, but.
Near is sufficient.
Perfect. Other than that, that's perfect.
Thank you. And then we have one new condition. Prior to the commencement of work, the city will conduct a video survey of the route identified in the traffic control plan. The applicant shall repair or replace any damaged street to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Hall route plan, right?
Correct.
The hall route. All right, so that will read, prior to commencement of work, the city will conduct a video survey of the hall route identified in the traffic control plan. The applicant shall repair or replace any damaged street to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
I don't know if traffic control plan needs to be mentioned.
Yes, they're two separate things.
Okay, that has been deleted. And then an additional condition of approval stating performance security, whether by security bond, cash deposit, or other security acceptable to the city shall be required prior to the issuance of a tree encroachment permit in order to assure protection of trees on site. The amount of said performance security shall be set at 50% of the value of the affected tree or trees, whichever is greater, which trees are identified in the tree protection plan. The performance security shall be forfeited if, prior to final building permit inspection, the director finds that the tree has suffered permanent damage. If no permanent damage has occurred, the performance security shall be returned two years after the final building permit inspection has been completed. The applicant must submit a request for the two-year inspection and releases of the security in writing to the director. If the trees fail to survive, the applicant shall replace them. If the applicant fails to replace the trees to security, the performance security shall be forfeited. Funds collected through the forfeit of the performance security shall be deposited into the tree fund.
I think that's perfect. I would ask for one clarification. Where it specifies the amount, I would say, comma, $51,821. Sure, I'll take a question. Go ahead.
So I don't have the arborist's report at hand, but my recollection is that several of those trees were listed as in declining health already?
They're all listed as Class B, which is not declining health. There's A, B, and C, and they're all listed as B.
All those trees that are in question?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think there's one more condition about the asphalt repair.
I'm sorry, about asphalt repair?
Yeah.
Yeah, in the frontage.
The width of the property frontage, asphalt repair to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
All right, so condition number 17 will be modified to read, existing curbs, sidewalk, or other street improvement adjacent to the property frontage covering the entire width that is damaged or displaced shall be repaired or replaced as deemed acceptable by the city engineer.
Was the asphalt included in that?
Stays other street improvements. Would you like asphalt to be specifically?
Yeah, I think asphalt, I mean, I would even say that curb, gutter, sidewalk doesn't need to be mentioned at all.
I think the full width of the street also needs to be.
Yeah, the full width of the street. So something like, project shall repair asphalt for the full width of the street, fronting the property to the satisfaction of the city engineer, something like that.
Commissioner? If there's a way to just, any trees that are in good health, I think that's a fair condition. But Tree 72, which is in the tree protection plan, is listed as poor condition, recommended removal, broken top, no hope for recovery. So there's a few trees that are in this plan that I don't think are in great condition. I think we should carve those out from the bond.
Fond of already reflects that, doesn't it?
I mean, I think if the tree's in good condition, that's a fair condition, but it might be.
I think the value of the tree is assigned by your arborist, and a tree that's in poor health wouldn't have a high value. I'm not sure what arborist report. Let me see if I can find the page that I'm looking at.
So this is in page, packet page 78. I just want to make sure if the client is putting money up that we can make sure the trees are okay.
Sure, and it's not a cash bond. It's an assurance from like a surety. So it wouldn't, no one's asking the applicant to put up that much money. I am looking at packet page 78. And all trees are listed as a tree disposition B, which is the penultimate column. That was a note, a sentence also in the arborist's report that all trees are listed as B.
She's looking in this health. So there's a column for health and a column for tree disposition. And then the last column has notes and recommendations, which further elaborate on the health of the trees. There's a footnote that defines B a little bit differently.
I see. Hey, give me one second.
Thank you.
If that same tree is listed as B, but it says broken top, recommended removal.
Yeah, it's conflicting. I mean, there are a couple of things in the arborist's report that were erroneous. But corrected with the DUDAC report, which was appreciated. My computer is freezing. Are you able to pull up the, what goes into the $51,000?
Ah, if you know where it is, yeah.
It's above that. Thank you. Yeah, I think the condition is taken into account on packet page 70. So it talks about the condition of all the trees and then gives a dollar amount. Okay. Okay, so does staff have the final condition?
We do, thank you. So condition number 17 will be modified to read, existing curbs, sidewalk, or other street improvements, including roadway asphalt covering the entire street width adjacent to the property frontage, that is damaged or displaced shall be repaired, or, I'm sorry, that is damaged or displaced shall be repaired or replaced as deemed acceptable by the city engineer.
The thing is, I think there needs to be clarity that the road that is already damaged would need to be repaired, not just damage beyond the existing condition for this particular condition. So what did I say before? The project shall repair the asphalt, the full, sorry. The project shall repair the asphalt street for the full width of the street at the property frontage to the satisfaction of the city engineer. So the repair is repairing what is currently damaged as well as anything that gets damaged in the future.
Just along the frontage.
Just along the frontage. One moment, okay.
Just to understand your vision a little bit better, when you say repair, do you mean like fill potholes? Or do you mean repair?
And the reason why I say repair instead of replace is to add some flexibility to the benefit of the applicant because it may be determined that, I don't think this will be the case, but just a slurry seal can remedy the cracking, the issues that are in front of the property, not necessarily an entire structural replacement of the road where you replace the asphalt and the aggregate base underneath it, which is a much larger repair. I don't necessarily think that entire repair would be required, perhaps just a grind and overlay, like just replacing the asphalt itself instead of the entire street section.
And that's where the satisfaction of the city engineer part comes in.
Comes in, yeah. I mean, if it is clear to say, replace the asphalt in front of the property for the full width of the road, I mean, I'm fine with that, too. I think the key part is it'd be the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Okay, we have done an additional modification. So the condition 17 will now read, existing curbs, sidewalk, or other street improvements, including replacement of roadway asphalt covering the entire width adjacent to the property frontage, that is damaged or displaced shall be repaired or replaced as deemed acceptable by the city engineer. And we just want to point out that the city engineer will not allow a repair replacement to a level below, you know, a standard condition for the city. So if there's any existing damage that's substandard, it will be repaired.
If there's any existing damage that is substandard, it'll be repaired? So it doesn't need to be explicitly stated in the condition?
Yes, because the condition requires that it be deemed acceptable by the city engineer. So we'll have to meet the city standard for road repair.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, so with those four, three conditions?
Four.
With those four conditions, are you willing to make a motion, Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah. I have a crack at this. I move that the planning commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approves coastal development permit, CDP 42921, and tree permit TP 524 by adopting the attached resolution including conditions of approval in Exhibit A as well as the new conditions we've discussed here, including the requirement for a performance security bond to ensure the protection of trees on-site reflecting the arborist's values at $51,821. The requirement of an arborist on-site monitoring during excavation per city arborist recommendations as read by city staff, and including the condition that the applicant repair roadway asphalt to the satisfaction of the city engineer in the entire frontage of the project property for the full width of the road, including pre-construction survey of the entire roadway subject to the haul route for this project. It incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Let's please vote.
My button's not clicking. That was not the button.
Redo. Let's, I think we're having some technical difficulties. I'd like to re-take the vote, please. Is that okay? Thank you.
The vote, yes, and the project is approved. Thank you.
That was, yeah, great.
That's why it wasn't clicking, apparently.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much. Let's move to item two. Does anyone need a quick recess? Or shall we keep plugging? Let's keep plugging, okay. So now we'll move on to file number 2018-058, site development permit PSD-838-18, and tree permit TP-4-24 for construction of an approximately 3,180 square foot single-family residence with an approximately 668 square foot attached three-car garage and approximately 680 square foot accessory dwelling unit and associated improvements on an approximately 26,055 square foot undeveloped lot located approximately 330 feet east-northeast of the intersection of Rockaway Beach Avenue and Bayview Road. May we have a staff report, please?
Could I just have a minute? I need to pass.
Absolutely, take your time.
I know a couple of good electricians.
Yeah, we have three electricians coming in. I shut the power off.
I had to rewire my house three days after we moved in. The solar system blew. And it was like tied in because of battery backups. And someone was like, yeah, we'll be out there in a couple weeks. I was like, it's December, I have no heat. Taking a week off of work.
I know. Well, I couldn't work today. Because we had to pack, like all the baby stuff. Oh, that's why, okay. I was like, I was pumping, I was seeing like, how am I going to keep this going? Skin cancer removed last week.
Oh, my God.
But he couldn't get to work. So it's like the whole, there's like five stitches.
Was it nasal cell or like?
You tried, but worked. But you just say next line. Okay, are we ready? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ranu Agarwal, contract planner with the planning office here at the City of Pacifica. And this project is a single-family residence on Bayview Road, Kalera Terrace. And the... The project site is approximately 26,055 square foot undeveloped flag lot in the Rockaway Beach neighborhood. The general plan designation here is low-density residential, and the zoning is single-family residential hillside. There is approximately 49% average slope, which runs from northeast to the southwest direction. And there are, in terms of surrounding land uses, residential development to the west, along Bayview Avenue, to the south-southeast, along Rockaway Beach Avenue. And to the north of the site is a paper street, which is just a platted street, it's not developed. There is a 40-foot wide right-of-way for the Kalera Terrace. Next slide. So the residence itself that is being proposed is 3,180 square feet, and it's going to have an attached garage, which is an additional 668 square feet, which is three-car garage spaces. And then there is one-story, 680-square-foot accessory dwelling unit, which are arranged on the site, as you see on the plan. The residence's site design per se is driven by the fire access requirements for the site, because they need to have a fire turnaround, and on this side, to have that hammerhead, the buildings needed to be located in a manner that that was made possible. There is one protected monode tree that will be removed. There are a total of four trees, which are within 50-foot construction distance, or within the footprint of the improvements in development. There are two other trees that will be removed, but they are not protected trees. One of them is dead. And there are conditions, there is a condition of approval included, which asks for replacement trees for a total of four trees, for the trees that are protected and the other one that is being removed. The site development would include 3,907 square feet in landscaping, and approximately 11,248 square foot would be in undisturbed area. So on the total site, that would be area which would not be disturbed. The project conforms with the applicable zoning standards, with the greater setbacks than zoning requires. The height confirms, and lot coverage, et cetera, also are confirmants with the zoning standards. Next slide. This is the elevations for the project. So there are two levels to the residence, and it is oriented parallel to how the contour runs on the site. The main entrance is from the upper level, and then it follows the slope of the land towards the south, and the lower level is more set back into the hillside. There is a series of tiered retaining walls, which are more cut towards the northern section of the site, and then there is fill to, towards the south. The retaining walls in the front are a maximum about five feet high, and they are stepped back, so it, it's not just one high facade there. Towards the back also, where there is cuts to make room for the driveway, the retaining wall, one facade height is about approximately 10 feet, and it then steps back from there. The architectural style, and probably talk about it a little bit later, is Spanish Revival, so it includes certain elements, which kind of serve to reduce the scale of the building, because this does have a larger footprint than the houses that are in the vicinity. Next slide. So the entitlements that are being asked for, for this project are site development permit, and the tree removal permit for the removal of that one protected tree. For sequo purposes, Class III categorical exemption, which exempts one single-family residence in a residential zone, as the exemption that staff recommends be applied here, because none of the exceptions which are, which would make that application of exemption invalid apply. There were a series of, next slide. So we received a number of public comments, even after the staff report was published, and there were three or four broad themes. So I'm going to speak to the access-related issues that people had brought up, and then what was the architectural and aesthetics concerns. And then the applicant and the city engineer are both here, who can talk to the stormwater and drainage and slope stability, et cetera, concerns that people brought up. So there were comments about whether this access is going to be sufficient. This project was reviewed by the fire department. Existing access easement that they have on the property is about 12-foot wide, which comes in from Bayview Kalera Road, so it was a long process trying to figure out exactly how access could happen. And next to that access easement is a third, is right now a 13-foot wide planting easement. And the applicant worked with their neighbor to do an amendment through that easement, so that there is an extra 16, six-foot, which makes for an 18-foot access driveway, which was reviewed by fire. It is not the standard 20-foot width that they require, but in this case, because it would be totally infeasible without, to have a fire access if that requirement was not carefully looked at, and then other provisions made to have fire access here. So there are other elements, like grooved streets, and looking at the radius to see that they can have a fire truck go in there. That was something that was reviewed by the fire department. There was another comment in there, which wanted exploring the access coming in from Kalera. But here, it's, it's a little dense, but the road is, itself ends very much to the east of where the site is. There is not a street there, and if it were to be developed, it would have more grading and really steep slope challenges. With regards to the aesthetics and the architectural quality of the building, we considered how to reduce the scale of this building by using architectural elements and patterns within the facades, because in terms of the area itself, it meets lot coverage requirements, it meets height, and any of those standards were met, and there was, based on the geotechnical report and ARPS report, there weren't any public health and safety concerns, really, to the point where, you know, it would be that they couldn't develop this site. So the idea was to scale down the building, and that was done through trying to have varied roof profiles and typical elements of this specific type of architecture, which is the Spanish Revival style. Other than that, there were concerns about stormwater drainage. People were concerned about how slope stability would happen here, which is where drainage needs to be effective for slopes to be stable. So I will have the city engineer, maybe they can come and explain in greater detail, but just broadly speaking, they're going to capture all the water from the stormwater runoff in three bio-retention areas, and one water harvesting area, which is in front of the building towards the south. And then there is a dissipation area, which is still further ahead to the south, in front of the retaining walls. So the way the drainage system has been designed here is that the water is captured, and then pumped up from the southern portion to the bio-retention area, which is next to the driveway, and then, you know, conveyed down to the stormwater system in Bayview Road. Right now, based on my understanding of how the water is getting distributed, the water that will be going towards Rockaway Beach Avenue is less than what it is right now, because of the fact that they will have harvesting pipes there, and also the dissipation area. Then with regards to grading, there is some significant export in the range of 1,327 cubic yards. So we have a condition of approval that the applicant has to develop a traffic control plan, and it sets out, the condition sets out, which is, I believe, condition number 34, which sets out what the traffic control plan needs to include. And they would need to have that in place before any kind of construction can begin, or even building permit is issued, so. That was another concern during construction, what happens. In nutshell, can I have the next slide? Staff recommendation is that the commission find this project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and approve the site development permit, PSD 813-18, and tree removal permit, TP-4-24, as condition. That concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for staff?
I'll save them for deliberation.
Okay. Please go ahead, Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. Do you mind going into detail what the planting easement currently allows? So does it permit access? I guess, what is, what is the language of the planting easement?
We're talking about the one which is right next to the access easement.
Right.
So it allows for, you know, fence retaining wall-type structures, and it also allows for planting material in there. But then they did an amendment to the easement, which is Attachment E in the packet, which is, you know, spells out exactly what the owners of this property can, can do or not do. So they are able to widen that driveway with that amendment.
And so the amendment's already been recorded with the county, and it allows access?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't believe that, maybe I missed it, but I don't believe that was in the packet. What, where?
Attachment E?
That's the geotech.
That's the geotech report.
No, I'm sorry. You can leave it out. I am deeply sorry about this. There is supposed to be an attachment in here, which is, I can enter it in the record right now, and...
I think it would be helpful to see a copy of it. Yes.
Okay.
I have it here.
This is not it. Attachment E is here.
Yes, I, do you know what, what page you want to go to? I cannot find it.
Do you have that, which says amendment to grant the easement?
Commissioner Berman, do you want to continue with your questions?
Yeah. We could, we could look at the, the easement later, once you find it. In the same, oh, go ahead.
We, I, we found it. I just wanted to see.
Yeah, let them continue, and then I'll pull it up.
Okay.
Okay.
In the same area, so Lot 6, and I'm looking at packet page 165, who owns Lot 6? Where, where the subject easements are?
The lot is on, you mean to say the planting easement?
So it looks like the access easement and the planting easement are both within Lot 6, and I'm, I'm wondering, does the applicant own? Okay.
The, the applicant does not own the Lot 6, because then they wouldn't need an easement over it. So the underlying property owner is probably the owner of Lot 5, but I think we would want confirmation of that, because I'm making conjecture.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate that. So confirmation of who owns Lot 6? The, this may be a question for the engineer, but the dissipation area, what flows to that? If all the runoff is going to bio-retention areas, what, what's the, like, what flows to the dissipation area? What's the purpose of it?
If there is an overflow, one-third of it, one-third of the building area flows based on this proposed plan towards Rockaway Beach Avenue, and I would invite the applicant and the city engineer to explain that in greater detail. But the overflow is what would go towards the dissipation area if there is, so that's kind of like another layer of...
I guess, question for city attorney. Is it typical that drainage easements would have to be coordinated if there's a potential for this development's runoff to go into the dissipation area, and then therefore continue down the hill into properties along Rockaway Beach Avenue?
I'm not familiar with whether we would require that.
Okay. Those are my initial questions.
Does anyone else have questions?
Wait for deliberation.
I'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, I think, so, I have questions that I'll defer to after the presentation and after public comment. I think the biggest question I have on this project pertains to SEQA, in that I do think that there are unusual circumstances on this particular site, and I think we've had a lot of similar sites that have not been under a categorical exemption. So I would want to understand a little bit better why we're assuming this is a Cat 3 exemption, because there, I mean, so geotechnically, there seem to be some unusual circumstances, and that's like the majority of my questions pertain to that.
Are you referring to the slopes on the site?
I'm, I'm referring to slopes. I'm referring to maps in our general plan update from two years ago that show slides in this area, like throughout this area, and then walking the, the area and looking at some of the properties, it's very clear that retaining walls and structures and a lot of the built site improvements on adjacent properties have moved over past years. And so I think I would, I would have expected either, like cone penetration testing in the geotechnical report, or an updated geotechnical report, and not just a letter that says, no work has occurred, so I'm not changing my recommendations, or some level of analysis. And that would be consistent with a lot of these similar types of lots that we've looked at. Like, this, this is the first time I've seen us recommend a Category 3 exemption on this type of project, so that's, I, I just would like more insight into that.
Sure, Heather, if I may?
Sure.
So the unusual circumstances exemption, so the test is whether there are unusual circumstances on, as to the action that's in front of you, the project, or the project site, and... site, and, and whether those unusual circumstances establish a significant effect on the environment. And so if I'm hearing your question correctly, it's the slope that would be unusual for you grading? Or, sorry?
Yeah, I mean, so I believe the staff report said that this was a one, like essentially a one-to-one slope. And I think the general plan map shows events. So I would have assumed that that would have been part of maybe an initial study. I don't, I mean, I don't know, right? Like, I'm not saying that there is an effect here. I have no idea.
Right, so just as, right, so just as a factual, just as far as a legal test goes, the, 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 the circumstances you were describing about landslides or slope would have to be unusual for the vicinity of the area.
Correct. And that's why I'm having the concern because if you look at the general plan map, that's what's, it's not just this site has an unusual circumstance, right? It's the whole vicinity. So...
There would have to be something special about this property compared to the vicinity. It's not that the vicinity of the project area is unusual. It would be something about this particular site would be unusual.
Okay, I have more thoughts on that, but why don't we, let's, let's get to, I don't want to spend a lot of time on something where I think we have an engineer here and hopefully a geotechnical engineer here that can answer questions. And with that is the applicant. Does anyone else have questions? No. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes, they do.
Okay, great. The applicant team can come up. And I believe you have 10 minutes and can reserve up to three minutes for rebuttal. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, fabulous. Welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Javier Chavarria with JC Engineering, and I'm the agent and representative for the applicant and owners, Mr. Robert Benda and John Spinker. We have a presentation. First of all, I'd like to mention that I've been in Pacifica doing civil engineering since 1985, very familiar with the area. I've been a resident of Pacifica since 2002, long time. When we started the design of this building, and how can we move the slides, please? When we started the design of this property, we started taking into consideration what the neighbors was. Rockaway is a very unique area in the sense that there is many flag lots. This is an example, 891 and 893 Caldera Terrace. Can we move to the next one? Then we have 741, which is immediately adjacent to our lot, is also accessible through flag lot and 743, 749, if we move to the next one, 154 Bayview Road is also a flag lot. So the distribution of our lot is not unique for the area. The houses previously mentioned, 741, 743, are exactly on the same slope, on the same conditions that our lot are. Can we move to the next one, please? This image actually shows, next slide, please? This image actually shows the configuration of the property on site. And it may clarify the questions that you had regarding the easements. The portion that extends rectangularly towards Bayview Road, that is part of our property and that had a 12-foot planting easement granted to the neighbor on the north, that easement was negotiated and then reduced so that we will have an 18-foot usable easement, not easement, but usable portion of the lot to access with a proper driveway acceptable to the fire department. The portion in the north, there is a very distinctive triangle that is also part of our property, but it has been given as a planting easement by many previous owners to the owner of the lot immediately to the north. So in reality, the only portion that we can develop is the area that is the trapezoidal shape and the access that we have is directly from Bayview. We move to the next slide, please. When we designed the building, we started thinking first and foremost of safety. We see many of these other lots in the area, our flag lots, and they do not have an appropriate turnaround. They do not comply with the minimum distance to, for the fire department to access and fire a fire. So what we did here, fit the best possible way we could in coordination with the fire department, an acceptable turnaround. We designed the building to hug that turnaround and we designed a retaining wall on the upper part of the hill to buttress that upper section of the hill to protect the road and to act as a catchment wall. The majority of the grading that we are doing here is to create that fire truck turnaround, which actually will be very beneficial for the neighborhood because Bayview Road doesn't have a fire truck turnaround. This one, it will be a very welcome addition according to the fire department. Whenever a hillside is developed, it's actually improved, opposed to the belief that when you're constructing something in there, you're going to create a mess. If the hillside is properly engineered and the drainage is properly collected, it will improve the conditions from what you currently have. The new regulations that we have, C3 and C6, require that the post-development runoff is the same or less as the pre-development runoff. For that effect, we've designed flow-through planters, detention tanks, and a series of elements that manage the flow so that it doesn't overwhelm the street. Currently, the slope drains towards Rockaway Beach Avenue and all the flow goes that way. With our design, we are intercepting all the northern portion of the lot, collecting it and draining to the storm drain on Bayview Road. Only 30% of the roof drains towards the rear. And that runoff is collected first by a tank that is able to hold a 45-minute, 4 inches per hour rain, which is a 100-year storm. And then when that gets full, there is a pump system to send the water up to the storm drain up on Bayview Road. We may have power outages. So we have a battery backup if the power goes out. And in addition to that, we have a redundant system to put a gasoline power generator as a further measure of protection in case of an emergency. In addition to that, we have two retaining walls in the back that create kind of a planter. If the system, for whatever reason, one of those things that we cannot foresee gets overwhelmed, water will come up and be detained by that planter. Again, it's only 30% of the site that is going to be handled that. 60% of the site is going towards the front. That 30% represents less amount of the water that is currently going towards the back of the street. Another element that we are doing is, on the design, we have indicated that the grading will be done in stages, very small amount. Even though there is a large overall amount, it will not be a single time operation. First, we're going to do the driveway, the retaining wall for the access driveway. Single axle trucks are going to be used, probably two at a time, with a small excavator to do that area. And the project will be done in smaller steps in there to prevent impact to the street, to prevent traffic impact, but most importantly, to facilitate the work in a difficult hillside. As mentioned before, there are some landslide mapped on the upper area, which are a potential hazard for all the other properties in the area. With what we're proposing, we are doing a building that is going to be sitting on deep-drilled piers that are going to be 18 to 20 feet anchoring to bedrock. We're going to have a buttressing retaining wall that is acting as a catchment for the area, any slope or anything that will come. The freeboard that the retaining wall will have will be able to actually not only protect our property, our lot, but also any possible debris flow to the properties below. So the design of the building incorporates drill piers, incorporates retaining walls, and a very comprehensive drainage system that will prevent, I wouldn't say prevent, but it would improve the conditions from what we currently have. Next, actually, go to the photos, please, two more. The Rockaway Beach neighborhood is a very eclectic neighborhood. We have architectures from very traditional to very modern. We have a couple of homes in here that are large. We have homes that go to a very modern appearance to a very traditional appearance. So establishing that an Spanish Revival building will be out of character, we don't think so. I think a Spanish Revival is a building of character, will be an enhancement of the area that will improve the eclectic appearance of the neighborhood. It's a building that, most importantly, the fire department was concerned of the proximity to the open space area. And they suggested to do a building that will be, to have all the possible fire resistance. So by using stucco, terracotta tiles, and non-combustible materials on the exterior, improve that firefighting condition. The Spanish Revival has curves and charming elements that are very characteristic of the missions in this area. And let's remember that Pacifica has a wonderful entire connection with Adobe and the Mission Dolores. So it's an architectural style that will belong in this area. The size of the building, we don't think is overwhelming, is 3,180 square feet, which is comparable to many of the homes in the area. The ADU, it's something that is a given, right, by the California, the current California law. If we can move to a couple of slides forward. I have prepared some elevations. These are not renderings for a specific vantage point, but they are, next, they're renderings to give you a better feeling of what the building looks like. This is an elevation prepared as you are entering the driveway. You will see the retaining wall on the left that will be landscaped. We are going to cooperate with our neighbor that holds the planting easement and then make it nicer. Next slide, please. This other slide shows the side view. Some people have the idea, say, it's a 35-foot tall building. Well, it's 35 foot the way that we measure the height from the lowest point to the tallest point. But if we see the appearance of the building from the side view, we see great articulation and we see small masses of building only being seen. And lastly, two slides more, please.
And just, sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to cut you off. I think that was seven minutes, right? Or was that 10 minutes?
That was 10 minutes.
Oh, okay. Let's, can you wrap it up?
Basically, just wanted to close with, this is the rendered rear elevation. And if Robert and John want to add something, other than that, I think we'd be happy to answer any question you may have.
It's nice to be here. It's been a long time coming. And we purchased the property in 2018, and this is our home with our two boys. So that's the purpose, and the EDU is for our family, our mothers, dads who need to have a place to stay. And we're excited for the building, excited to be with you. And let's go to the technical stuff because I know you guys have a lot of questions. But thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
Happy to answer any question you may have. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for the applicant before I go to public comment?
I have a quick question for the applicant. I agree with you that 13 years ago, this geotechnical analysis is probably pretty accurate. We're 13 years later. I've lived here that entire 13 years. It has been my experience that the weather patterns are very different now. We've had a lot of rains, there's been a lot of soil movement. I personally have observed soil movement on the hillside similar to what Sam has done. I noticed in your letter that you were making an assumption that things really haven't changed, that there hasn't been any work done. I personally observed work that, not the work being done, but the byproduct of work that was done very recently. So I have a little bit of doubt as far as that goes. Why is it that you chose not to do an updated study?
No, that is not correct. Our soils engineer prepared the initial report in 2011. And as the project has progressed, that was for a previous owner. When the ownership changed, soils engineer came and made an assessment of the property, reevaluated. And when we were getting ready to submit, he had to make an update because the building code from 2011, building that plans will not be accepted based on a report that was that old. So he came to the site, he visited the area, he did some additional investigations, and in his professional opinion, it was that the conditions and recommendations that he had on the report were still applicable.
Could you point me to where these additional studies and additional recommendations were in the report, please?
He did not prepare any further additional reporting there. And I'm sorry that he's not here today to speak to that effect, but he has been involved and he had done additional work and additional evaluations of the site. And the latest letter that he submitted, it was based on his last site inspection. I'm not a geotech, so I'm not exactly, I cannot put word on his word, but I have to trust the opinion of a professional geotech.
It sounds like that's the best that you could answer towards that question. I'm going to save my other questions for later.
Okay. So what we'll do now is we'll go to public comment. And if we could put the instructions on the screen for public commenting one more time? So I have yellow speaker cards up here for those who filled them out. If you wish to speak and have not filled out a yellow speaker card, please fill one out at the back of the room and bring one to staff. I will call the names of the first two to three people, and we'll go through the people in the room before moving on to Zoom and the phones. You have three minutes for your comment. So the first person is Carol Fragley, followed by Cliff Lawrence, and then Channing Hu. So Carol, you're up.
My name is Carol Fragley, and I live at 727 Rockaway Beach Avenue, directly below the very steepest part of the property in question. In 2021, I was shown renderings that appeared to have been revised to minimize the impact of this plan. And in the attempt to be a good neighbor and at the request of Mr. Benda and Mr. Spinker, I signed. Tonight is the first time I've seen the new renderings. And so obviously, the originally signed letter no longer describes the situation as it has involved. But I really like Mr. Benda and Mr. Spinker, and I would love to have them as neighbors, just maybe not this way, which I fear for them will devolve into a financial quagmire. If they were my sons, I would advise them to buy a preconstructed home so that they could continue to employ their architect, engineer, contractor, and also give local realtors a sale in the process. As such, I actually apprise them of a place that will soon be for sale in the location they desire, with ocean views and much of what they want. But I am also a homeowner, and as such, I have two concerns. Short term, considering the amount of erosion caused by the 2021 clearcutting on the property situated above the steepest part of my yard and the workers' subsequent water diversion, which channeled heavy rainfall negatively impacting my fence and small retaining walls, what assurance would I have that work on a larger scale would not create even more damage? Who then would be liable? The owners, the engineer, the builder, or the city? And what recourse would I have? Long term, if the entire project is not completed, who would be legally and financially responsible for the residual damage to the hill and the surrounding areas and also for the related impact on adjacent properties? The owners, the engineer, the builders, or the city? With so much at stake, it seems that I and other neighbors with similar concerns would require something that would be legally binding to ensure that these issues would be resolved before being able to consider this project tenable. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to express our serious concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Fragley. Thank you, Ms. Fragley. The next speaker would be Cliff Lawrence, followed by Channing Hu, followed by Vera Toth-Tehal.
Good evening again. Cliff Lawrence? I'm a relative latecomer to this particular application. So I'll start with, the public record that was available to me was out of date. Even tonight, the active application spreadsheet says this application is incomplete. There's a few steps between that and, I believe, a hearing. When did this become complete? Also, the drawings and such that are made available are out of date, apparently. While I've heard descriptions that the process of analysis required downscaling of this, the active application spreadsheet actually refers to 2,800-plus square feet, and now we're up to 3,100. So I don't know when the reduction occurred. Was there a third one that we got to that was larger than this? There's also mention of a document in the, in the drawings. I have not been able to get it. I was looking for what were the terms of the planting easement and what was the, what was the story on the so-called Paper Street? Now I hear the owner says they have ownership of that 12-foot, also described as Lot 6, which I've been looking at, which includes the planting easement, whatever that is. And there's supposed to be some kind of wall, retaining wall in there, and it sounds like that's got to be carved out. So I had concerns about the easement, I have concerns about the slope. In the document that I'm reading now, it's suspiciously like there's something going on because there is just a hair under 50%, they said the slope. Well, there's a geotech report that's included in the package that was 56. Now, I suspect somewhere in here, we've got an issue that is a CEQA issue. And I can't see that you can exempt this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. The next speaker is Channing Hu, followed by Vera Toth-Tehal, followed by Augustine Barczuk.
Good evening. My name is Channing Hu. I am the owner of the Lot B that's on the site map. What I'd like to know is, you're draining water to Bayview. How are you going to get the water to Bayview? Are you going through my property? Are you going through my neighbor's property? Everyone's been talking. You're draining the water. If you haven't seen the latest atmospheric river, that whole area comes down like a fast-moving river. You can use a whitewater raft. So I'd like to know, where exactly is this water being channeled out onto Bayview? Water flows down, not up. So it's not going to go through the easement. So maybe someone can tell me, where exactly is the water being drained? Because the weather has changed, and we get water like there's no tomorrow. So maybe someone can tell me, where's the water being drained out? Okay? So water doesn't go up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hu. Vera Toth-Tehal, followed by Augustine Barczuk, followed by John Horvath, and that is the last yellow speaker card that I have up here.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to share my voice this evening. I wanted to first of all say that I welcome our new neighbors, and I think it's a gorgeous home. Having said that, though, with all the earth movement, the construction and excavation we've been talking about, the plan as it now stands, I think, requires CEQA review. And the reason I say that is because there are some concerns that have been brought up by some of the commissioners about how this actually isn't subject to exemption because of some of these things we've talked about, like the erosion, the landslide, and these are all on the records that have been presented to you. So I would just like to suggest that while I agree with having the development done, that we do go ahead and do further exploration of the CEQA process because of the potentially significant adverse events of impact of any of the number of things that CEQA would be looking for. And in this way, I think both the neighbors, the neighborhood, and our new neighbors would all feel more secure with the safety checks that CEQA would look, would put into place for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Augustine Barczuk, followed by John Horvath.
Good evening. I have three clarifying questions, and I appreciate the opportunity to ask them. First, we want to bring the attention to the lack of design noise hours and would like to ensure that the neighborhood has aligned with the applicant for working hours for each day of the week, minimizing these hours on the weekend. Please let me know about point in the planning process this is addressed. Secondly, regarding the traffic control plans, staff report packet pages 150, 90, 160, there seems to be some confusion. It appears that the plan refers to Olympian Way, as shown on packet page 160. It doesn't reflect the traffic for Rockaway Beach Avenue and Bayview Road, neither of which has the width to accommodate vehicles passing each other on some parts of both roads. I would ask the applicant or staff to come back with a plan that addresses the narrow roadways and the lack of space for parking and construction vehicles. Third, I request a clear articulation of the separation between the driveway and 125 Bayview, which is five feet from four-bedroom-facing windows. Please clarify the fencing or retaining walls planned for the south side of the driveway. The map is challenging to read, but it appears that the driveway is also going a foot over the property line. We'd like to ask that the applicant confirm and align with the neighbors on these details prior to the acceptance of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And just to clarify, all questions will be listened to, and then planning commissioners are welcome to re-ask questions after public comment is closed, but no questions will be responded to during public comment. John Horvath. And that is the last speaker card that I have. So if anyone else in the chamber, oh, I see another.
Thanks. So I'm John Horvath. I'm the owner of 741 Rockaway. It's the, it shares the eastern border of the project is my western border, the whole length, top to bottom, north to south. And this project was not, I bought the property about nine months ago. The project was not disclosed in the seller's disclosure, and I was only notified of this meeting by a neighbor about four days ago. So I'm not really up to speed. I haven't really had a chance to read all of the documentation and current and historical filings. But I do have three, three kind of areas of concern. The first is safety and the risk of mudslides. We heard from my neighbor Carol down the hill that there was already an issue when they clear-cut the brush and bulldozed a little pathway that caused some damage to her backyard. So I can see that, I can see the neighbors below being of a higher risk. So the issue with the grading is that, you know, it's coming at 49.6% is the average, I think, for the lot. But if you look at the lot, it's the, the upper third is very flat, the lower two-thirds is very steep. So 50% is 26.6 degrees, to put it into perspective, that layman can understand. It's kind of like a black diamond ski hill. The lower part is much steeper than that. I took a, it's probably 30 to 35 degrees. I took a picture, put it in the package, I did some measurement. It's 30 to 35 degrees, and that's where it's going to be constructed. Not on the flat part, the flat part's all going to be driveway and paving. It's going to be on that steep hill that is over 50% grade. So that is kind of the issue, and I would like to request the city do have an independent assessment of the grade where it's actually being constructed, not the average on the property. I think that makes sense. The second is the, the size of the project. It's 35 feet tall, as I mentioned. It's very intrusive to my home because it actually is very, very close. The side view that the applicant showed in the slideshow, you'll never see that because to see that, you would have to be in my living room. That picture will never be taken, all right? It's probably like 30 feet from the bottom of the house, but much closer, like 10, 15 feet from the ADU at the top. The driveway actually touches my property. And the issue, and like why it's a weak design is because most people like their homes higher up so they have a nicer view, but this one, the flat part is all being paved, and then you have this ADU and a three-car garage while they're building the property on the, while they're building the, the main structure on the lower part, on the steeper grade, which just makes no sense. It's, it's like a self-inflicted compromise, and as a result, it's going to tower over my house. And the second thing I would like is to have them put up some story poles so I can actually figure out how much light is going to be blocked. The planning report said that it's not going to have any impact with, on light, but it will have a significant impact on, every single night.
You know what? I think, I think the-
Every single night.
He, he can take your time?
Yes.
Okay. Your, your neighbor is yielding his time to you, if you want to-
Okay. So in, in the planning report, it said that there would be no impact on light to neighbors, but-
Chair Elzer? Yes. We're not sure if we allow yielding of time. Oh, I thought we've done it in the past. I would, but I would appreciate if the city attorney could shed some light.
I'm not clear on whether your bylaws allow ceding of time, but the chair has the discretion to allow that for this particular circumstance.
Mr. Arslan, you're going to, you, you are not going to provide a comment? Is that, am I understanding that correctly? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms., Ms. Arslan, are you providing a comment?
He wants, he's putting some in his card for him to take his time.
Ms. Sharma, I'm going to need some guidance. I'm not quite sure what the, so it's, it's my purview?
Yes.
I think it would benefit us to hear him for another couple of minutes.
Okay. Let's, please keep going.
Okay. So I was just saying, in the, in the report, it actually said that there's no impact to light on my property. However, every single evening, the light will be blocked, to a certain extent, by the, by both the ADU or mostly the main structure. But I can't tell exactly how much because there's no story poles. Can I request that some story poles be put up so I can see exactly how much this house will tower over and how much light it will block? Because it's impossible for me to tell, I'm not an engineer. So that's the second request. And the, the only other thing I would say is, there is actually like a reasonable way to do this, and that's to try to set it back further. You've got a 25-foot setback, they're only going, or they need a 20, 20-foot rear setback, they're, they're going 25, shift it back five feet, get rid of the ADU, get rid of one of the three-car garage, and there would actually be enough space to set it back to get it off the steepest part of the hill and move it further up. But for some reason, they're like decided to build on the steepest part of the hill, which is what I don't, don't understand. So to review, I would like some more time to do, to review the curtain, the historical documents, and figure out if I need to get some kind of like legal representation or something. An independent third-party assessment of the grade, and especially the grade where the construction is going to happen, not the flat part above. And then finally, I would like to request to have some story poles so I can see exactly how much light and how much is going to tower over my building. That the mass, the bedroom literally looks into my living room, my kitchen, and then the ADU looks into my master bedroom and master bathroom. So it's not like it's not intruding on my privacy. It's very close, and yeah, it's, it, it really did not take into account my home at all in its design. That's all for me. Thank you.
All right. Then the last card I have is Jackie Arslan.
Good evening. Excuse my voice, I'm kind of losing it. I am a resident at 115 Bayview Road, which is neighbors of Vera and Channing and St. Susan. I've been a renter there for the last four years. Also, I am a local Realtor, D R 02128043. My concern is the depreciation of the value of the property. My living room actually faces directly to where the proposed property will be built. Just as my neighbor was just saying, it would be completely impeding the view of the home and the value of the home. And I don't think that the plans were actually taken into consideration of what that said property would do for 115 Bayview. I would greatly appreciate that to be viewed from my personal space so that you can see the actual slope and the actual view being impeded, and how it would depreciate the value of the home. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That is the last speaker card I have. Are there any folks on Zoom or on the phone? And a reminder to press star nine if you are dialed in by phone.
Chair, looks like we have four raised hand this time. Caller ending in 5537, you may go ahead and speak.
And caller, reminder to press star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is Chaya Gordon, and I live on Rockaway Beach Avenue. I have serious concerns regarding the engineering that has been done for this project. There's a history of landslides in the area, and many jurisdictions don't allow for areas with steep slopes to be built on. Why doesn't Pacifica have slope restrictions like that, especially when we know these restrictions prevent the significant environmental impacts of such a project? The staff recommends a CEQA exemption, which doesn't make sense, given how heavily burdened the site is by the steep slopes and its history of landslides. The applicant is following a geotechnical report done in 2011 with only three borings. How much has the land eroded since then? Take a look and you'll see. And it's increased even more since the clearcutting of this property started. These environmental impacts need to be studied with current data. The city of Pacifica lost a costly lawsuit because it failed to properly review the environmental impacts of a residential project with an over 50% slope. In her ruling, Judge Feynman cited the unfit nature of the sloped site with a history of landslides. This sounds an awful lot like the project had issued. When the applicant recently resubmitted the project, the slope had somehow changed from 56% to 49.23%. Either the slope changed, which is worrisome, or the numbers changed. Why? This is important. The property's access is via a narrow easement with extra access added by joining an existing planting easement. The new easement already suffers from erosion, and removing its trees and plants, which currently hold down the soil, will hasten the erosion. Emergency vehicles will not be able to manage the extremely sharp turn from Bayview to the property. I understand the fire department signed off on this, but it still does not comply with all legal requirements and is a very dangerous plan. At 5:00 AM one morning in 2015, a ferocious pounding on my door woke me up. It was a Pacifica firefighter who said, "We're battling a six-alarm wildfire coming down the hillside behind your house from Fassler. We're evacuating this end of Rockaway." I looked outside and said, "Where are the fire engines?" He replied, "Rockaway is too narrow to have two engines pass each other, so we're routing them up Fassler." Thanks to the skill and bravery of the firefighters, the wildfire did not get all the way down to Rockaway, and our properties were saved. I'm not sure that would be the outcome with this plan. These are just some of the issues that indicate this project has not been well-planned, and the environmental review is extremely inadequate. The report- The reported change in slope, which coincidentally favors the applicant, is one place to start. But with the available information on the plan and the site and existing knowledge of Judge Feynman's ruling, the best place to start is to deny the application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Sarah Poon, you may go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Sarah Poon and I'm the property owner at 725 Rockaway Beach Avenue, which is immediately downhill from the proposed development. And for your reference, this is labeled sixty-three and sixty-four in the plans that you have. We share our neighbors' concerns about erosion and runoff and the landslide risks at the site resulting from the construction of this property and don't feel the need to rehash those concerns here. I would like to share some concerns about the design overall that should be taken into account should the commission move forward with approving this proposal. First, we're concerned about the setbacks. As you can see from the maps, the, the retaining wall that is drawn on the, for the plan comes within about five feet of our rear property line, and we understand that to be compliant and within the minimum distance required, but we are concerned that any deviation from the plans as drawn would bring that wall unacceptably close to our rear property line. And appreciate if the commission does approve the plan, that they assert this expectation that these setbacks be retained in the building. We're also concerned about potential impacts to our property value from the retaining wall. We have seen renderings of prior versions of the retaining wall that appear to have an, a height exceeding ten feet, but as, after looking at the current plans, we understand that no portion of the retaining wall is expected to exceed eight feet in height. We do expect that anything higher would have significant impacts to our property value as it would be a direct line of sight from our home. And so, we appreciate if the planning commission does move forward that they assert compliance with the planned wall heights in the approval. So, just wanna thank you for the opportunity to comment. We certainly believe that the property owners have the right to build on this site in a reasonable manner and appreciate you taking these conditions into account.
Thank you for your comment.
Summer Lee, you may go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, commissioners, this is Summer Lee. Commissioner Wright, thank you for questioning the Geotech report. I don't think there's any downside to asking for a more current Geotech, given all the different changes in storms. And I am not a neighbor to this proj, project, but I am, you know, concerned about the city's liability and the policy for good planning. And I, I think, again, there's no downside for taking the time to explore more, a higher level CEQA review, given that the site, just in plain view, has some issues. And I, again, I know intimately the Vista Mar lawsuit and these are very similar issues. And it's just, I think, I hope we can learn a lesson from that one. And I think it's really great for the commissioners to keep asking staff and the city attorneys for more information and really get this one right. So, thank you, thank you for already asking great questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I think we have one more speaker?
That's correct. Greg Jones, you may go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the time to talk to you. My name is Greg Jones. My wife and I are the owners of 154 Bayview Road, directly across the street from the proposed project here. First, real quick, just, I'd like to thank the commissioners. I was on the, the quarry call a couple of weeks ago, understanding how difficult that was, but I was very impressed how each of you asked very poignant questions, and I hope you continue to ask poignant questions and thoughtful questions on this project as well. So, my, my concern, I very much support all of my neighbors and have great concern for the runoff, erosion and, and all the issues that have been brought up before, and the Geotechnical Report, I think, is an excellent one. But as a neighbor directly across the street with the driveway facing the easement heading up to this, to this property, I, I have several, many concerns with regard to that. First one is, you know, I recognize the engineer from this project is the same one from the odd-set drive project from a couple of years ago, and, you know, from my window, from my kitchen window, I can see how that project was clear-cut, the whole property is clear-cut, nothing ever happened to it, and it's kind of an eyesore. And so, I, I have difficulty trusting some things. And the, you know, he, the engineer discussed about the road only having a couple of single-axle trucks going up the easement to do that project and one excavator, but he did not at all discuss all of the trucks that will come out hauling dirt from all the, you know, clearing of all the dirt that's gonna come in. There's gonna be, you know, I think, like thirteen hundred or so cubic yards. I don't know, nobody talked about how many truckloads that's gonna be up and down Bayview Road. And specifically, in the letter even I wrote today, the, the right turn from Bayview Road onto that easement is very narrow. And I'm looking at page one sixty-seven of the packet that was sent out today, and there's like two blue lines showing the curve to drive up there and, you know, you know, my measurements maybe not precise, but it's pretty close that the-
One minute.
On the, on the curvature part of that road, it goes from eighteen feet width of the street and of the easement to about eleven feet. And so, and, you know, looking at dump trucks, they need at least eleven or twelve feet to make a safe turn. And I question how many truckloads full of massive amounts of dirt and tonnage of building equipment are gonna be able to safely make that turn and down the road? Road conditions out there are terrible. There's two huge potholes right in front of the easement property line. I measured it four feet by two feet today and about an inch and a half deep, and that's the bigger one. There's another one right next to it, there's, and we know the city's position in the past Bayview Road and Rockaway Beach Avenue have not had support for, for repaving or, similar to the previous project that was discussed tonight, there needs to be some sort of guarantee that the roads will get fixed if this project ever goes forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Have any-
Yeah, Chair, looks like there's one raised hand just now.
Sure.
And it's got, they lowered a hand.
Okay. Well, seeing no more comments, no, okay. We'll close, I think, yeah, I think we don't have time for the applicant to, to do the rebuttal. So, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to commission questions and deliberation. Would anyone like to kick us off?
So, from what I understand, the project proposed cannot be built further back into the hillside because of the need for the access road for fire? Is that correct? Okay. I'm a Rockaway Beach resident myself on the lower end of the street, and I walked my three- and five-year-old all the way up to the project site today. There is no two-way traffic on that street, and that access road is troublingly small, even with the easement extension. So, I'm sitting here thinking, if the reason that the property cannot be placed on a safer part of the lot is for the access road, it, I do agree with some of my commissioners' concerns, and I'm, I'm encouraged that so many people showed up because it's really rare that this many people show up to our meetings. I think I'd like to hear a couple other, you know, people speak and then I can jump back in, but if you've spent time on that street, I would, I'm, I'm really thinking, there's so many good points brought up, so I'm just, I'm gonna hold here for a sec. Apologize.
Alright.
I'm happy to add a few thoughts at this time. I heard Chair speak that she wasn't totally comfortable that this is CEQA exempt. I share a similar concern and a similar level of discomfort, and I just wanna put that out there from the start. I would feel much more comfortable evaluating an updated Geotechnical Report. I am not convinced either way that there isn't a Geotechnical Solution or a Geotechnical impediment to this project going forward. I was encouraged by a number of the concerned neighbors still welcoming these people to their neighborhood. This is not what we experienced in our last meeting, so from a community perspective, I was very glad to see that. I too have some concerns about the mudslides. I do have some concerns about some work being done and having it misstated on the report. That brought a few things into question. I think we, I feel like we need a little bit more time to evaluate some of this. I would have a quick question for staff either way, for either side regardless of what we do. Could they please explain the appeal process of what happens if somebody is not happy with whatever happens tonight or in the future?
So, if you approve the project, there is a ten-day appeal period to, during which time any neighbors or anybody who wants to appeal the project can appeal it to the council, and then it goes before the council. The applicant also has the ability to appeal during the time period, so let's say if you were to say that you, you deny the project or you put some more conditions on it which cannot be fulfilled, or if they feel that they cannot be fulfilled, they have also the ability to appeal within the ten-day period to the council.
And then a quick question for the city attorney. With my level of discomfort, could the city attorney speak to what our options are in, regarding CEQA?
Sure. The commission could direct that, this to come, a continuance for staff to review the CEQA issues and CEQA concerns that have been raised.
And similarly with the Geotech report?
Yes. I would just ask that the commission be direct in what their, in their direction to staff as to what the commission's looking for in, for a Geo, for their Geotech review.
At this time, I'd like the opportunity for some other commissioners to get their bigger-picture questions in.
Yeah. Commissioner Ferguson?
Sure.
You go first, Lisa.
Yeah, don't take all my thunder. I have a couple of staff questions first, and then I'll go to some questions for the applicant. I recall in the past that we've talked about a sort of, there's no real view shed ordinance in the Pacifica general plan, and it's been brought up before where there's been a, a home with an unobstructed ocean view, had another home built in front of it or a multifamily, and it's some kind of project that completely obscures that view. And it's my recollection that we weren't able to put any conditions of development around obstructing an existing view for adjacent residences. Is that correct?
Yes. Commissioner Ferguson, so the city does not have anything that specifically protects private views. The city does protect public views, and those tend to be views from the public right away.
Understood. That was, that's my recollection, exactly. And then I, I had, I was formulating in my head something around a, a sort of a condition that, for me, would be important, which is some kind of a pre-construction survey baseline of existing erosion that's happened since the Geotech thirteen years ago. Would it be possible to impose a condition on the applicant to oversee some sort of third-party baseline of the properties immediately downhill of this? I'm thinking of the, sort of the scale of this construction project as a single-family residential project is as, it's, it's as obtrusive as any I've seen in the five or so years I've been on the commission, and it's, it's quite a bit of cut-and-fill and grading on a, on a pretty steep hillside, so I'm wondering if, if there is a way to put language in to require some kind of agreed baseline done for the adjacent properties prior to construction.
So, they actually do have to provide a Geotechnical Report, which is like a final Geotechnical Report to the building department?
On, on the property developing? I'm talking about the adjacent properties.
I don't believe that we could compel them to do something.
Understood. That's my question.
Yeah. So, I guess, so generally speaking, you could allow, you could impose a condition for surveillance of neighboring properties if they consent to the-
Condition.
If, if, if they consent to the inspection occurring, but they couldn't unreasonably withhold their consent in order to preclude the-
Yeah, I was thinking of like survey monitoring of the adjacent structures to ensure that construction activities weren't affecting things, just trying to avoid down-the-line litigation, which is, was referenced several times by some of-
They, yeah, so property owners would have to consent to the-
Sure, sure. We would be within our purview to impose that being made available to them.
Yes.
I've got some applicant questions. Anyone else got stack of questions? I can just keep rolling?
You can keep going.
Okay. I've had a few questions. Was it ever looked at to use the Paper Street right-of-way instead of the, the right-of-way for the driveway that you guys have highlighted here?
Yes, indeed. Several stories were made, either to come through Bayview, continue up the Paper Street, or come around Calera Terrace. The amount of grading that was involved to make Calera Terrace work and the involvement, basically with all the neighbors along a nine-hundred-foot stretch, it, it was really prohibited.
Okay. I was hoping you could describe for me, the packet alludes to screening and there's some renderings, but there's a lot of kind of extensive retaining wall done to the west side of the structure. And just a couple of notes about the screening, vegetation screening to occlude those retaining walls. Can you describe sort of the design intent of that screening and, and what it's going to look like?
Absolutely. The retaining wall is basically on the northern side of the, of the lot. There's really no retaining walls on the western. The retaining walls are along the property line that divides a small access road in the neighboring property and in front of the planting easement. That's, that retaining wall is built as a tier system with a planter in between where plants and ivy will be planted hanging down the face of the street, of the, of the wall so that it will grow onto the wall, so-
I'm talking about the retaining walls shown on the southern side of the-
Oh, on the southern side of the street, okay. Those are small walls, those are two five-foot walls, also established on a tier system with plant, the plants on the upper tier will block the upper wall, and the plants below the lower tier will also block the wall below. So, the intent is that the actual concrete appearance of the wall will be shielded by vegetation.
Okay. Last question. I was hoping you could describe a little bit for me, some of the, the stormwater control system in a little bit more detail. I kind of gleaned from the packet and what you were saying that is it, is it the case that the plan is to, there's a hundred-year storm catchment basin, temporary catchment basin, but then all water falling on the hardscape to the north side of the project and thirty-three percent of the house is all to be conveyed to the storm drain on Bayview? Is that my understanding?
Correct. As you're probably familiar with, the current regulations require that a drainage system is done in such a manner that the post-development drainage out of the site is the same as the pre-development. To achieve that, we use storage tanks, we use flow-through planters, detention basins. So, this site is designed with a couple of detention basins and a couple of flow-through planters along the driveway area. The upper portion of the site, which has natural runoff, that's gonna be collected- The upper portion of the site, which has natural runoff, that's going to be collected on a swell behind the retaining wall and going into the first bio-swell that we have in front of the property. All the water coming from the paved areas of the driveway will be collected on a second bio-swell and a storage tank, and it will be in a managed way diverted towards the Bayview storm drainage system. The roof of the ADU, the roof of the garage, and the front portion of the roof of the building that will also drain by gravity to a third bio-swell that is at the upper corner of the property, and then ultimately draining to Bayview. So, basically, the upper two-thirds of the property are managed in such a manner that all that water is connected and delivered in a properly, I'm sorry to say it again, in a proper managed way to a storm drain system. The lower portion of the roof, which is approximately 30% of that roof, is the only area that goes into a catch basin, first into an storage tank. That storage tank is fitted with a catch basin and a pump to pump that water to the upper bio-swell and back up to Bayview. So, there is no water intended to drain back down to the adjacent properties. We're intending to collect everything here. And that pump is the one that will have a dual backup system. It will have a battery backup and a generator backup.
So, before any water gets to Bayview, it's diverted through a bio-swell?
Correct.
And so, it's only the overflow from something above a 100-year storm, which seems to be every other year now? It's only the overflow past that 100-year storm that will then spill onto the storm drain in Bayview?
That is the intent of the design.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Berman?
Touching right off, if you don't mind, touching right off of that, I think you mentioned this earlier. So, the detention tank at the south of the property, is that sized for a 100-year storm?
It's sized to hold a 45-minute rain at a four-inch per hour.
Okay. And the pump system, is that going to be specced for conveying the same capacity?
That is correct. It's a dual pump system, and it's going to have the proper alarms. If one pump fails, the other starts acting. If power is cut or is lost, the backup battery will come in, and if that battery doesn't provide sufficient charge for a long period of time, another alarm will be set for an automatic gas power generator to come on.
More so the hydraulic sizing of the pump?
Oh, absolutely.
My question, what I'm getting at is if the detention tank, if the storage tank is sized for a certain size storm, I want to make sure that the pump system can convey, convey that size storm, that the pump system isn't going to be the rate-limiting factor leading to inevitable overflow, which I think we're all very concerned with.
Absolutely. The pumps will be designed to that effect, yes.
Okay. Still in the stormwater management realm, the detention area, or, sorry, the dissipation area, so that's intended for anything beyond the 100-year storm as overflow?
No, the dissipation area, the first line of action is for the subdrains of the retaining walls. So, the retaining walls have these subdrains that are deeper than the location of the pump. So, we expect very little underground water to come into there, so that's why we're using that dissipation. So, and the dissipation is also oversized as a secondary means of defense in case that the pumps fail and the storage system gets overflowed, so it will drain into that area of gravel that is installed.
So, the primary use of the dissipation area is for the subdrains for the retaining walls?
Correct.
Okay, which is expected to be probably minimal drainage, right?
Exactly, particularly because we are controlling the majority of the surface runoff.
Okay. Still in the stormwater realm, because I have quite a few questions, that's why I wanted to go last to see, well, you always go last, I know, to see what got checked off the list. Is it architecturally possible to pitch that last third of the roof that is going to rely on the pump system? Is it possible, and I'm not an architect, to pitch the roof so it can gravity flow to the bio-retention and then down?
Our initial design had that feature, but what happened was that the roof made the building a little taller and appeared to be a little more massive. So, in interactions with planning and some of their recommendations, made sense to articulate the building and bring some of the roof down to diminish the mass of the building, the overall appearance, and the overall height. So, by doing that, it became very difficult to overcome the difference of elevation between that roof and the point of discharge.
How about, and this is probably another architectural question, is there a way to be creative with the roof water leaders, the downspouts? Because that, because the height of the building is, you know, literal potential energy, potential to route the water towards the front of the property. Is there any opportunity for that? I guess kind of the underlying issue that I have is relying on a pump system, I know there's redundancies, relying on a pump system and then relying on storage size to only a certain capacity, which, I mean, in today's world, storms are getting worse and worse, and, and then flowing to the southern portion of the site, which would lead, will lead me to new questions about storm drain and drainage easements. But is there any way to effectively not drain to the south of the site?
Perhaps if we can bring one of the images that I had on the presentation that will give us a clear perspective, it will be the third slide from the last, from the back. If you go down, it will be the third from the bottom. That, that one. So, if we look on the right side, we see the ADU, and from the roof of the ADU to the driveway, there is about nine, nine and a half feet to the elevation of the driveway. So, if we project a line from the driveway, it comes to about the peak of the roof of that lower section. So, the point of drainage for that lower section of the roof is lower than the actual height of the driveway. Perhaps we can do some evaluation of the drainage, and then instead of taking that 30% all down, perhaps 15%, put another detention element a little further up the hill, sort of manage the system down and prevent the majority of the water, not prevent, but try to keep the majority of the water on the upper side. But because of the roof elevation, there is hard to achieve that at 100%.
Okay. Yeah, the, this visual is helpful. Let me, let me sit on that for a minute and move on to my other questions. How long is constructed, construction expected to take?
Probably 14 to 16 months.
Where is the expected staging area for equipment?
The way that it'll be constructed is, the existing access driveway is relatively flat, so the first line of action is going to be the construction of the retaining wall along the driveway. Once the driveway is constructed, that will be a very ample staging area.
So, the staging area is going to be in the access driveway? How are...
On the turnaround.
Oh, at the top of the site?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then when you're constructing the turnaround, where will the staging area get relocated to?
Well, the driveway is long enough that we can designate probably the left side or right side. We haven't really gone into that much detail right now, but along the sides of the driveway, there is sufficient space in there for that.
Okay.
And then the construction of the retaining walls will be done mostly with pre-made forms. Instead of bringing tons of lumber, pre-made forms are made, the retaining walls constructed and poured, so the most impacting area is going to be the concrete trucks when they're coming for the pouring. But other than that, we don't foresee a substantial impact on the foundation work.
I'm going to keep going through just so I don't take too, too much time. I noticed that there's, the existing houses on either side of the access road are shown in the plan, but the house that's to the east of this property is not shown in the plan? Can that be added to the plan? And, I mean, I, I understand you may need to work with the property owner for some topographic survey. I, I think what I'm, what was that?
I thought there was a picture.
I mean, there's a picture, I don't know. The main thing that I'm looking at is I want to see how close that house is to this development, and I think it's going to be helpful to actually see that home in the plan view.
Absolutely.
Because it, it's helpful to see the other homes along the access drive. So, I think that would be helpful. I personally would love to see contours also, but I understand it's not your property, so you may not be able to survey in there. The, I think you mentioned in your presentation that the applicant, or the property owner owns Lot 6. Is that true?
Correct. And Lot 6 being the narrow portion that connects the big lot to Bayview, yes.
Easement?
Yeah, so legally, you can't grant yourself an easement. So, why the need for an easement if you own the property?
No, the easement is not for us. The easement is a planting easement through the adjacent property owner.
So, there's no ingress easement that's mapped in that driveway?
Okay, so, it's, it's, I'm not privy to all the history on how the easements were created, but a 12-foot easement was granted by the owner of the subject property to the property owner to the north. And then the triangular portion of our property was also granted as an easement to the homeowner of the lot at the north. So, those two easements are planting easements for the benefit of the neighbor.
The, sorry. On packet page 165, it's Plan Sheet A-21. Lot 6 has an access easement that's to the south of the wooden retaining wall? What are, what's the details on that access easement?
That is, so basically Lot 6 is part of the lot, and when the planting easement was designated to be granted to the neighbor, they also named that other section as an accessing utility easement. And as I said, I'm not privy to the original drafting of the easement, but when we prepare the final map, not the final map, the survey for the area and did the title investigation, that's how it shows, that the ownership of the lot belongs to the owners of this subject property, and Lot 6 is designated as a planting and access easement. But ownership belongs to this lot.
Okay. I, I think I would be interested, and this is probably for city staff, to see the documents for both easements. And I understand that one of them has been amended, but I'd like to see the documents for both of the easements, the planting and the access.
Commissioner Berman?
Yep.
If I may, has the engineering department done title review on this project?
The engineering department, they reviewed it, yes.
They reviewed the preliminary title report?
And, and so...
So, we also have a lot merger on record, on, on, on the files, the city files, where it shows the property as the boundary that is shown here. So, the, the engineering department did review all those previous documents. In fact, we went through a whole process because, because of these easements, there was in fact an old easement that was not operational anymore, so all that was hashed out at that time.
Then we should be able to see it. Then can we see it?
The documents?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I think a title report and any exceptions on the title report would be really helpful at some point.
I think that's all my questions for you. I have, let's see, how to be efficient. I think there's a couple of things that I would like to see, some of them have already been mentioned. I think we're going to talk about CEQA review. One item that I'm especially interested on further analysis on environmental impact is during construction, the erosion control plan, because I think it's going to have to be hardier than the erosion control plan that is in the plans right now. Because it's going to be 14 to 16 months of construction, it's going to go through a winter, and it's a really steep slope, so the erosion control measures are of interest to me during construction especially. I'd also like to see, one of the commenters mentioned story polls. I think we've done, we've requested that on past projects. I think that's a really great idea for everyone to kind of understand the scale of what is going to be built. I would personally like to see an updated geotechnical report, but I think we might talk about that a little more as a commission. Oh, I have one more question for staff. Are retaining walls allowed in setbacks in our city?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Is there a height limit to it?
There is height limit to retaining walls. It is measured from the higher grade.
Is there a limit? I guess, yeah. And I would like to, we've also asked for this on a project in the past, similar project, new development, kind of on a hillside. I'd be interested to see rendering views from public rights-of-way. So, from Bayview Road, from Rockaway Beach Avenue. I think we requested this on the Talbot project. That's right. And that's all I have for now.
Can I ask staff one question before you jump in, Chair Houser? I apologize. This is something that I did hear in, in public comment that I would like to learn as well. You know, I do understand, and I appreciate you explaining the robust storm, stormwater system and redundancies and whatnot, but what happens if this diversion does fail and affects neighboring lots? I'm curious what that looks like, who is potentially responsible for that damage, if that damage will be mitigated. You know, much like other neighborhoods in Pacifica, Rockaway Beach is not completely unique in this. We see this in Valamire, we see this in Peter Point. The roads, there are, there's active, active water and water containment issues and road issues. Even now, as we were like trudging up the street, there were massive potholes filled with water after days of rain. And so, when there are really, really active storms, I am concerned that if these redundancies fail, what that would look like for the neighbors.
But that was a scenario which was, apparently must have been examined by engineering. I don't believe that... don't believe that, that is the worst-case scenario situation that is reviewed with a lot of different projects. You look at the plans for what they are proposing and see what their workability would be. That with the dual generator and then also a water harvesting area which will hold water and not release it down the road. The, all of the site is not draining down to Rockaway Beach. In fact, the proposal that they have on, in front of you, the...
I understand that in a best-case scenario, this is a plan and plans can fail. And these neighbors would be directly impacted. And if they were, they would, it would be, it would be a significant financial burden to them. So I'm going to want a little more information on liabilities other than best-case scenario plans.
Yes. Commissioner Devine, I, I can step in here. So typically when city staff is reviewing these projects, we review them under the most, most likely scenario. And so we do have general standards of what that would mean, a 50-year storm, 100-year storm. And that's what we review projects for, with the understanding that there are events beyond that that could occur. And, and that's, you know, an act of God could be... Scenario, the most likely thing that's going to occur and ensure that the project is built to that standard and that it can accommodate that, in this case, water flow or rainwater. But of course, we can look into if there is some sort of failure in the stormwater system, who would that be, who would be responsible for that? We can definitely look into that and come back to the planning commission.
I think that that would, again, quell nerves of neighbors that are rightfully concerned. And, and again, I think that generally speaking, your neighbors are willing to, are willing to suffer some massive disruption to have this lot developed. And some of these things are not too much to ask. When we say acts of God, in insurance terms, that pretty much means the neighbors are liable to pay for the damages. So it would be so great to have some extrapolation on that and fully understand that.
So I'm so sorry.
I would like a term, not kidding.
I'm so sorry. Adding to that, can we also have an understanding of the nexus of when a drainage easement is required in the city?
Okay, I'm done. No, I think, so, I mean, I have SEQA concerns and geotechnical concerns, and I, I want to talk about those. But before I do, I want to also say that I like Spanish-style architecture. It is an eclectic neighborhood of architecture styles. This is more of an unexpected style than a lot of the other eclectic styles that are in there, but I don't think that it clashes, right? And I think, like, I appreciate the level of detail. And like rosettes and like other elements that make this, you know, kind of classically Spanish. And I also appreciate a lot of landscaping that goes with it. I think when I look at the geotechnical report, right, and this is, this is, let me, let me start by saying, I visited the site, not actually on the site, but from neighboring properties on Friday when it was raining, which was freezing and terrible, but also very helpful for understanding water flow and what happens to soil and like what's actually happening on the site. So that, that was circumstantially helpful to understand. When I saw the level of kind of, I'm going to call it slippage because I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but when I saw like structures kind of moving across neighbors downhill, that kind of gave me some, enough concern to actually like really dig into the geotechnical report. And so there are a couple of things that I think are really notable here. One is, you've got three borings that are taken on this site. And, you know, admittedly, they were for another property owner. So none of the three borings look to be under the structures. They all look to be under sitework or the driveway. And they are four, six, and eight feet deep, which is kind of atypical for borings on a site like this, because they're not really deep. Usually you'd see something in like the 15 to 20-foot range. So when I looked at this, I was kind of surprised. You also have a recognition that there's like potential for landslide and debris flow here. So then that made me think, okay, we just updated our general plan and spent an inordinate amount of time on that particular section. So when I started to go through the, the general plan maps, I saw that this particular site has mapped, and it's hard to see, right? Like, there's not street names, but like when you kind of measure it up, there are mapped landslides on the site. You also have, like, so then I was like, okay, let me check the other maps, right? And it's not in a high fire zone, like, that's not really a concern, but it is in potentially sensitive environmental area. That's like Chapter 7 and Chapter 8 are really the maps that I'm looking at when I see this stuff, right? So that's where I start to think, like, I'm not sure, and so I want to make sure that you guys have a chance to, to talk if you need to, but like, I, for me, the exemption on this one just seemed like it didn't quite jive with all of the pieces of like, okay, this is what I'm seeing when I'm out there. This is the issue I'm having with the geotechnical report. It's not conforming with all of the like last 20 years of stuff that we've just integrated into our general plan analysis. So like, what would help me on a piece of property that is zoned for housing, where somebody owns a lot and should be able to build a house? Like, what, what would help me is an actual environmental assessment and actual geotechnical report that's maybe got some cone penetration, penetration testing and borings in the right location and a geotechnical engineer that's gone out to the site. I was surprised to see retaining walls on this site that's 50% grade change that are less strong than the ones that we just saw on the Olympian Way site, right? There's no soldier beams. There's no soil nail wall. There's no stitch pier. It's, it's just a regular retaining wall. And there's slippage here. So that's, that's my, like, again, that, say that, can you speak into your microphone?
In a different drain situation behind the...
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I actually really appreciate like the design of the house. I like that it's nestled into, like, from, from a design standpoint alone, it, it is big. Like, don't get me wrong. It's a very, it's a lot of house. But that's, I don't necessarily take issue with that. And I love that, you know, on a single lot, we could get two, two homes to help our RENA number. So that's also great. Like, the ADU is like awesome. I just am not comfortable with like the site and the sitework. And I just want that one other, like, I guess, two other pieces of analysis personally. And so that's where I'm kind of feeling. I don't know if people feel similarly or not.
Well said. In addition to that, I have a couple other little, small things. Speaking to Commissioner Ferguson's point, we might want to consider a certain number of pins along the property line with elevation markers so that we can track what actually happens during the construction process to offer the neighbors some assurance that, well, no, things actually didn't move or, yes, they did move. There's, there are ways to keep tabs on that kind of stuff. I do that all the time when I'm doing things. I put benchmarks on things.
Yeah, I think what I was getting at was, it's each neighbor's prerogative to do that, have them come out and monitor. I, I think that, given the scale of the cut and the type of slope, I thought that should be the, the liability of the applicant.
And then I had one other question before the next phase. I see a lot of gutters along the south side of the property. And suppose they get clogged and all that drainage then falls down onto those decks? What is the drainage plan for those decks? Where does that water go? Or does it just rush down the hill?
For the, the decks of the house? Yeah, I think it's in, what page is it? They are incorporated into the stormwater management plan. And the, my interpretation of it, the decks on the south side of the house will gravity flow to the storage tank and then be pumped with a pump system to the bio retention along the access drive.
Commissioner Devine, did you have? I think just, you know, I'm in the same place as you, where I'm going, somebody owns a lot. They should be able to build a home. There are so many neighbors that showed up in, in actual support of what you're trying to do, but just want assurances and want clarity on what you're trying to do. And I think I, I'm trying to get there myself where I'm going, I really need to understand two-way traffic on that street for emergency and construction vehicles, because there were, I mean, to think that there will never ever be an occurrence where something like that will need to happen is silly. I, I want to understand the placement of the project on the site in relation to the slope. I want to see that in the geotechnical. I want, I want it to be clear as day. I don't want it to be ambiguous. Right now, it's ambiguous. People are seeing different things. That's not really, that's not what we do here. You know, I do appreciate the extrapolation on, you know, responsibility if diversion fails. I really do. I know that may feel extra, but I, considering the community involvement, and I, I don't think so. And I really don't believe this is SEQA exempt for multiple reasons. And I would like to see that level of care being taken because of how important this is to so many people and how much this affects so many people on such a small, people that are used to very tiny lots, 2,500, 3,000 square foot lots. This, this gargantuan quarter acre is just surrounded by them. And I think that that's just the level of due diligence that this project may require.
Yeah. I thi, I think the benefit of having the SEQA document is understanding what the mitigations are. Because like, there is a geo, like, I don't know if it's pins, right? But like, there's a professional geotechnical solution to a lot of these things. There's a engineering solution to a lot of these things. I just don't feel like they are up to snuff with the complexity of the site.
Any other public comments, guys?
I'm sorry, public comment has, has closed.
I'm the guy that cleared the lot, so I know a lot of that. It just dawned on me an hour ago.
Think we might be moving to a continuation?
Yeah. So I don't know if...
You want to see water runoff out of Bayview?
I, guys, I so appreciate that everyone has strong feelings on this. I don't think, I think at this point, we've opened and closed the public hearing. And we have to respect the process. I, based on the conversations that were happening, that are happening, I think there will be more opportunity for public comment, right? I think that's what we're, it seems like we're getting to. So I would ask Ms. Cervantes to please let everyone know where to send additional comments and understand that if this is going to a continuance, which is where it seems like it's going, there will be another hearing with another opportunity for public comment. Okay? Ms. Cervantes, can you?
Yes. So any member of the public may submit written comment to, by email, to publiccomment@pacifica.gov.
Thank you.
Please. Another question. Sorry, this is a new one, but it did come up in quite a few public comments. Property value and the, the impact of existing property value with new development. Can you run through what our purview is on that? Or I guess, I don't remember if there's a statement in the new general plan regarding, you know, if, if there's a development that is expected to impact existing property value, or maybe there's nothing. And if there's nothing, please let me know. But that was a theme of some of the comments.
I don't think that it is a basis for a finding that is before you.
Okay.
I don't recall a property value being a part of the, a general plan consideration. Do you have a specific question as to your property value?
No, it's, it's generic, because I don't, I want to appreciate those comments. And, and I think it's a real concern. And there were quite a few comments related to property value, but I don't recall if there's any purview that we have in a finding of something impact, negatively impacting an adjacent property for financial reasons.
I don't remember that in the general plan, but what my thoughts on that are, as a commissioner, not as any legal minds on this, but if you live next to land that is zoned, single-family development, you kind of have to expect that at some point, there is going to be single-family development consistent. And the applicant is notably not asking for a general plan amendment or a land use change. I think at this point, we really need to be thinking about engineering controls.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll play devil's advocate against what I think is the, the direction of the rest of the commission, which is that we are getting into deliberating very specific engineering formalities. And there are professional engineers who have stamped this design and plan. And far be it from me to tell them they don't know how to do their job. So I'm neither a geotechnical or a civil engineer. So we could talk about things we've done in the past and general purviews, but if anyone else was willing or feels like they want to make a motion with me or second a motion, I'm, I think, ready to approve this without asking for additional geotechnical. But that's, that's where I stand. Just putting it out there. I think they have a right to do it. I think they've engaged professional engineers who have a license. Those people are liable.
I, I understand, I understand that thought. And I am similarly minded a lot of the times. But again, this is a 20-year-old geotechnical document that was done for a different property owner, for a different plan with boring spots in the building.
With you, yeah, totally with you.
That's, that's my qualm.
Yep.
Commissioner Wright, did you have something?
Much more minor, but I was wondering if the applicant, when they had mentioned in regards to the retaining walls, a number of vegetation options that would mask some of the, let's just say, visual impediments, is there perhaps some other considerations that they might give to some additional plantings that might minimize some of the appearance of the scope and just size of this project, particularly along the south and east walls in particular?
I mentioned this earlier, but I would like to see views of perhaps renderings on a photograph of what the development would look like from Rockaway and from Bayview. And I think that will help me in my confidence in the finding of the scale and visual impact of the project. And I agree with Chair Hauser on the request for an updated geotechnical report and looking further into SEQA review requirements for the project.
If no one else has questions or comments, I want to give staff an opportunity to weigh in, because we've given a lot of thoughts. And we appreciate that there was a lot of, you know, there's also a lot of analysis and, you know, is 130 pages of staff report and everything, so.
With regard to the drainage questions that have been discussed and the concern, and again, I'm not an engineer, but just what I get from the city engineering department, that the flow of stormwater that is currently happening towards Rockaway Beach Avenue is more than what would be if they did the stormwater system with this development. is more than what would be if, uh, they did the stormwater system with this development. So, uh, that's kind of like the baseline, what is happening right now. If that baseline is not something that this project exacerbates, it's not something that even CEQA is going to do anything about. And with regards to the geotech, uh, report, we did ask them to do, uh, updated, uh, uh, analysis and he did provide letters in 2022 and 2024, which were from a geotechnical engineer. And then the report initially was also reviewed by engineering. So, um, again, it's your direction, just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
But those were based on an assumption that things hadn't changed, I believe is what they stated in that letter. And that I would not make that assumption if it was me. And additionally, when she speaks about there's no difference in the water flow, there is a difference. Water is landing on a permeable surface and water is landing on an impermeable surface. So to me, that's a big difference.
Yeah, I, I think, so I, I wholly concur with you on the geotechnical. It, it didn't seem like the geotechnical engineer had maybe done another site visit or made a note of the mapped landslides that had happened that weren't noted in the original report. I think, and Commissioner Berman, I feel like you have a way better understanding than that. But like legally, I believe anybody who's building something has to have an equal or lower, release of stormwater post-project than pre-project, which is I'm assuming what they've calculated. And that's what we're saying, right?
Right. So that, that's something that, uh, engineering also, uh, advised us on, uh, that, uh, that this was, uh, the post-flow to Rockaway Beach was, uh, gonna be not as much as what is right now.
Because they're detaining water on site.
Right.
Um, another question for Mr. Chavaria. Is this a hydro modification site?
We are just under the threshold is, uh, 9,300 and some square feet. And in some discussion with engineering, there, they said, you are so close, why don't you treat it as if it was? And so did we.
Did you complete a BAM model?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, uh, I don't, not that I want to review it because it's not fun to review, but was that included in the staff report, the BAM model?
I don't think so. I, I didn't see it in there, but it was prepared.
I personally don't feel the need to, to see it. But yeah, so I understand and appreciate that the site will comply with the, the typical hydro modification requirements where the post-construction will be effectively equal to the pre-construction drainage. My concerns, which you probably understand from my questions, was effectively the overland release at the back of the site. You know, if everything fails and if it's a super intense storm beyond, I forget what BAM threshold is, it's like the 30-year, 10% within of the 30-year data, which in recent years has been worse than the past 30 years. So I'm just looking at the site from an overland release standpoint. If we cannot rely on any of the drainage system, there is going to be more stormwater flow to the south of the site. So that's where the heart of my questions came from.
And I, I completely understand and concur with your concerns and, and for that matter, for the concerns of everyone. We know that we have to do a complete and full geotechnical report for building permit. So we don't have any problem going now if we continue the meeting and have a properly documented and done, um, a soils report that addresses all the facts. As we were deliberating now, I started looking with a more critical eye at some of your ideas to being creative with the downspouts. And, uh, we can probably manage 90% of the roof to be gravity, gravity drain and minimize the impact that we have to that lower section. So, uh, we have no problem continuing. I mean, we're not here to bend anybody's arm to try to get this approved. We're trying to get a good project for everyone. So if you give us a specific directions, we'd be more than happy to address or try to address any concern that you may have. Again, it's important to understand that the fire truck turnaround dictates a lot of what we are limited to do. The grades that we can do, the height of the walls, I mean, there's very little else that we can do but hug the building around that area. But everything else, landscaping, uh, screening of the walls, uh, proper geotechnical measures, absolutely, we are all for that.
Okay. I, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, the only, the only comment that we have no clue how to address are, uh, her comments regarding the narrow streets and the, I mean, that is something completely beyond our control. That is a situation that with or without this home, it will continue, um, in Rockaway Beach. We'll be happy to participate in any neighborhood improvements that are planned. But I think this one home is not going to make a tremendous difference, um, on the conditions of the road.
Thank you. I appreciate everything you just said. I, if the commission is willing, I'm ready to make a motion or if there's any more.
I, I have one, oh, I'll let you go one second. I just have one more quick request for when this analysis comes back. As far as the architecture goes, it would be really helpful to see, and this, this doesn't change the design, but it would be very helpful to see where the setback lines are in the elevations, not just on the site plans. And then also for the aggregate height to be shown. It's shown in some places, but not in others. And so I think it would be, it would be helpful to make sure that that bottom floor is included in the number so that I'm not doing bad math. You don't want me doing math.
Sure, you're good at math.
Just to be helpful, I know I mentioned a while ago, a couple of things that I would like to see. I'm going to restate those right now really quickly. I would appreciate looking further into, uh, the site drainage at the south of the site. If there's, you know, anything creative with downspouts or lightly changing the rich, the pitch of the roof. Also, the views from Rockaway and Bayview, I think that'd be helpful to see renderings on photos of what the visual impact is going to be. Story poles of the actual height of the building in noteworthy areas. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, with the, with the story poles, um, there is a, there is a situation in there. The vegetation is pretty rough in there. You know, we cleaned, uh, the perimeters so that we were able to do our work and do proper survey. But the center where the building would be, I mean, there is probably five to six feet of really well-established veget-. So in order to put a story poles, we'll have to disturb that section there. I know the neighbors have been concerned about that. From the time that we get hopefully an approval from you here to the time that we get a building permit, there will be a period of time. So we just want to make sure that, uh, if we get the direction to do the story poles, I will be happy to do them. But let's take into consideration that there will be some site disturbance.
I will defer to the planning department's decision on that. And if it's determined that it's going to be more impactful to disturb the site there, then I'm fine to rescind that comment. And it could be decided at a later date.
Commissioner Berman, um, yes, I would appreciate that, just so that we can make sure that there's no trees or other, um, potential permits that might be required to install a story pole.
Okay, sounds good. And then lastly, I'd like to see the preliminary title report and the easement documents.
What happened to the CEQA analysis?
Oh, I was saving that for the actual motion. Cause though, what I just listed out are items that I would like to see for the continuance, which will be my next motion, which I'm gonna, well, I guess.
Please go ahead.
Okay. I move that we continue this item and, um, the planning commission requests the stated information that I just stated in addition to, uh, updated geotechnical report. And I mean, a sequin, the appropriate CEQA analysis for this property.
Just to ask a clarification on that, are you asking, are you directing, uh, the preparation of an initial study?
Yes, thank you. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's all vote.
Do, ooh, do we need to say to a date certain or uncertain? Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Please vote.
Okay, that motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, that was botched.
No. Okay. And that takes us to item three, annual review organization of the planning commission. I don't know if we need a staff report, but if you have one.
Chair Hauser, I had not prepared a staff report.
I think we know what to do.
I just want to highlight that, um, uh, your bylaws dictate that chair and vice chair will be chosen at the first meeting of April, which is today.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Is it too early for a motion?
I have deliberation.
Do you have a chair and vice chair in mind?
I absolutely do.
Would you like to tell us?
I, I would love to see Chair Hauser continuing her role as chair and I would love to see Commissioner Berman as vice chair.
So I really appreciate that compliment. I actually have a different motion, which is a little more consistent to how we've typically done things on the planning commission and how city council usually operates their mayorship. I would like to move that Commissioner Ferguson be appointed as chair and Commissioner Godwin be appointed as vice chair. But happy to deliberate.
Well, I don't think that would be a bad option. One of the things that I truly love about Pacifica is the amount of female leadership that we have in this town.
Yeah, he said.
And, um, I would love to see that continue. I'd love that example to continue for our young women in our community. I'd like them to look up and see powerful, smart, intelligent women doing big, good things.
I just realized something. I think we need to take public comment on this item. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Oh, geez.
I don't have any speaker cards for eight of three. Anybody who wishes to, okay.
Are there any hands?
Uh, Chair, we do have one raised hand.
Okay, let's open the public, uh, public comment period and let that person speak.
Sam Casillas, you may, you are now unmuted.
Mr. Casillas.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Dear planning commissioners, for this reorganized planning commission, the city council has voted four to one, that one being the only one with any dignity, integrity, and self-respect, to appoint someone who spot-on hits the other four's prerequisites for the open planning commission slot. Conspiracy theorists, check. Vilifies the Coles Commission, check. Wants to turn Pacifica into a toxic waste dump, check. Lapdog for SAMCARS, SmartCoast, and any of your carpetbagger developer, check. Still questions election integrity? Anyway, I don't blame this newly-appointed planning commissioner for taking the seat. He is what he is. But the mental gymnastics that the four council members had to do in order to justify this decision is risible. That means comically stupid to some of you. It is even more pathetic that one of our city council, um, goals is to foster a better working relationship with the Coastal Commission while appointing a guy who has spread misinformation about the Coles Commission continually vilified the Coles Commission in order to serve his misguided and delusional determination to have some purpose in life regardless of warped that sense of purpose has become. The irony of this appointment coming on April Fool's Day does not escape me and the guy doesn't even bother show for his first day. The City of Pacifica's planning commission and our city council are either dupes or, or a flat-out shameless fraud. The fact that multiple council members are now recommending citizens to consult CPUB for controversial planning projects instead of meeting with planning commissioners tells you all the need to know about a planning commission that is transgressively nothing more than a rubber stamp for whatever staff at the bequest of their SAMCARS overseers recommends. The fact that this council is losing its taxpayers millions of dollars with no accountability and legal fees and staff time to defend clearly indefensible projects while also crying about our structural deficit is a disgrace funded by real estate lobbyists to push their interests at the cost of Pacifica citizens. Why not complete the charade and make the new commissioner your chair?
One minute.
Yeah. I get that some of you might think my words tonight are harsh, but this moment demands harsh honesty. Do the individuals at the commission who also live here believe that the best Pacifica can do is turn our coast into a toxic waste dump? The last time I was here, I spoke about response, responsibility and accountability. Tonight I add integrity to that list. If you vote you're conscious, you know what you should do. Pacifica's not a dump. Thank you, Sam Casillas.
All right, thanks for your comment. Is that the only raised hand?
Yes, there are no more raised hands at this time.
Okay, so I will close public comment. We have two motions at hand. Would anybody else like to make a motion?
Has anybody spoken to Jim?
No.
I, I do believe we nominated, uh, Vice Chair Berman in her absence last time. So there's precedent.
I mean, so I am happy to stay and I am happy to yield. So if you would like to do it.
I have no particular desire to take over. I think you're doing a fantastic job. But if it's your desire or anyone else's desire, I'm also willing to accept the responsibility reluctantly.
How about, would one of you want to be chair and one be vice chair? Or is there a co-chair option where they alternate?
This is not the office.
There would just need to be one presiding officer for, uh, controlling the meeting, so.
Who would you prefer? I'll take vice chair, but. I believe you'd do a better job at this than me.
And you don't, you don't want to do it?
I think both of you would do a better job than I would.
You were great.
And Commissioner Devine, you don't want to do it? Okay.
I figured you were precluded.
And I asked Commissioner Wright the other day if he wanted to do it and he said no. Do you want to, you want to do it together?
Sure.
All right, let's do this.
Okay.
So do you want to make a motion?
What was the sign?
Oh, that's, that's a great question. Do you want to be chair or vice chair?
Uh, I don't really want to be chair, but I, I would be happy to do it if you would like to just take a backseat.
I don't, it's, like, I'm happy to keep doing it. That's fine.
Okay. I move to, um, appoint, elect, nominate, Chair Hauser to remain chair for the next year and then, uh, Commissioner Ferguson to become vice chair.
Okay, is there, is there a second?
I'd like the second. All right, let's please vote.
That motion passes.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, commission communications. Does anyone have a communication?
I would just like to say thank you to both our volunteers, understanding that they both have children and it is an extra time crunch and an extra commitment. And particularly in the chair's case, since her husband will be liaison with the water board. So he will be soon joining us at all these meetings too. So it's a big burden on families.
Is that true?
And according to last Wednesday's meeting, yes.
I'm going to need childcare.
I made that point, actually, at the meeting. But I do really appreciate you both stepping up and being willing to be of service. And I'm just really happy that we're all here and I feel real lucky to be a part of this community. And I'm real thankful for you guys being here, helping us lead us.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Any other communications? Okay, staff communications?
Just want to remind the commission that the April 15th meeting is canceled and on that day, we will have meeting number four for the local coastal land use plan. That meeting will be held here. It's going to be a city council special meeting that starts at 5:30.
Could we confirm the 25th? Is a makeup date for that?
That date has not been confirmed.
Okay.
Does anyone have a motion for adjournment?
A move we adjourn.
Seconds. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you both very much.